Let the record show that there is a quorum present at this meeting. We have myself, Diana Hughes here, Lionel Gandara, Mari Benavides, Dora Monta Rodriguez, Adrian Rodriguez, Ramitas, sorry, and Marco Reyes present. The time is now 6:32 PM, Wednesday, September 17th, 2025. I, Matthew Aguilar, call this regular meeting of the Pierceall Independent School Board of Trustees to order. This meeting has been held and it has been posted in accordance with Government Chapter 551, State of Texas Open Meetings Act. If during the course of this meeting, the board should determine that a closed session or executive meeting or session of the local board is required, then such closed or executive meeting or session can be held and authorized by Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551. Moving on to item two, implication.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord Jesus Christ, for your grace and your mercy, you heavenly Father. We thank you for today. Heavenly Father, we, we ask for knowledge, wisdom, understanding and discernment, heavenly Father, as we move forward in our, in our meeting, heavenly Father, that we place this in your hands. So I thank you for these and other women that have contributed, and I thank you with prayer for all the employees and the students that are here and in their honor as well. We thank you for the relationship everybody, my my community.
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, moving on to public comment. Do we have any public comment? No public comment? So then we'll move on to item five, recognitions.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, and Pierceall staff and community. We are proud tonight to recognize students and staff from each of our campuses. We will also recognize a district employee of the month, and we have a special recognition for National Instructional Technology Appreciation Day. So if we can begin with our campuses, I think we'll go ahead and let's go in order or reverse order, which do you want? I, I think Ms. Gonzalez was ready to get up. So we'll, we'll have Ted Florida's Elementary will be our first to recognize tonight.
Good evening, Board. So tonight, you're going to honor our September Student of the Month. This student is a shining example of kindness, responsibility, and a love for learning. She comes to school each day with positive attitude, tries her best in everything she does, shows little math pride every Friday, and encourages her classmates to do the same. She has been very helpful to her teachers, Ms. Bonda and Ms. Garcia, and has been an exceptional leader in the classroom. Her respectful behavior and caring heart make her a wonderful role model for our school community. So tonight, we honor Ms. Adeline Longbody. Good evening, everyone. Tonight for Pierceall Intermediate, we would like to recognize our Student of the Month. This student consistently demonstrates strong academic effort and growth by always being prepared and putting forth his best work. He shows excellent character and citizenship by being respectful, kind, and responsible, serving as a positive role model for his peers. This student, leadership and behavior stand out as he encourages others and leads by example. With great attendance, active participation, and school spirit, this student truly represents the qualities of an exemplary student at Pierceall Intermediate. We are proud to recognize Mr. Anthony Bonda. Good evening, everybody. For Pierceall Junior High, we'd like to recognize Emma Jackson. Emma Jackson is the Student of the Month for our campus. She's always giving her best effort in every class and is consistently respectful to both peers and her teachers. Emma's dedication and positive energy set a great example for her peers and what we truly mean by what we say, every step, don't be afraid.
Good evening. The September Student of the Month for Pierceall High School is Alexandra Frazier. Alexandra is, is someone who stands out not only for their academic effort, but also for their character and leadership. Alexandra sets a positive example for his peers by being responsible, respectful, and hardworking, both in and out of the classroom. He demonstrates perseverance, stays engaged in his learning, and is willing to go the extra mile to succeed. Beyond academics, he contributes to the school community. Alexandra's active in clubs and athletics. He shows integrity in his actions, treats others with respect, and takes pride in representing Pierceall High School. How Alexandra is not able to be with us, he is at church this evening.
We also would like to recognize an employee from each of the campuses. If the principals will all four come up, and we'll take turns doing the employee, and if the employees will come up when you call them, and we also have a gift for the employee.
Good evening again. So for our employee September, or for our Employee of the Month for September, this staff member is described as consistently going above and beyond to support both her students and her colleagues. She creates a positive and engaging classroom environment where students feel valued and motivated to succeed. Her dedication, professionalism, and teamwork contribute greatly to the success of the school, making her an excellent choice for staff member of the month. Please help me and welcome and congratulate Ms. Julie Scripture, our pre-K teacher.
For Pierceall Intermediate, we would like to recognize Ms. Jeanette Garza as our Employee of the Month. Jeanette had a prior commitment, so she was not able to be here, but just to highlight some of the things she has done for us. She has, she began the year hired as a computer teacher, but we had a shortage and we were lacking one teacher in third grade, so she stepped up to help us for two weeks in that third grade classroom. And then, once we hired that teacher, she was able to go back to the computer lab. Turns out that following Monday, or weekend, I got a message from another teacher in the fourth grade, and that teacher has to be out for an extended period of time due to a car accident. So then I met with Ms. Garza, and I said, I really need your assistance. Once again, I can't have students with a substitute for six weeks. So she graciously volunteered to help us out in that position, and she has been taking our math class for fourth grade for about six weeks already, and she's been doing a phenomenal job, so I would like to recognize her for that.
Pierceall Junior High would like to recognize our instructional coach, Ms. Maritza Gonzalez. She is our Employee of the Month. Her unwavering commitment to student success, staff collaboration, and continuous campus improvement does not go unnoticed. She is always ready to give a helping hand to help build our teacher and student capacity. Her insight helps our campus grow stronger each and every day. Thank you, Ms. Maritza Gonzalez.
The Pierceall High School September Employee of the Month is Mrs. Angelique Rivers. Mrs. Rivers inspires creativity, confidence, and curiosity in her students. She creates a classroom that feels welcoming and safe, where every idea is valued and mistakes are seen as part of the, of the artistic journey. With patience and enthusiasm, Mrs. Rivers encourages students to explore different mediums, experiment with their imagination, and express their emotions through art. She balances structure with freedom, teaching skills like drawing, painting, or design, while also giving students space to develop their own style. Mrs. Rivers celebrates individuality, helps students see beauty in the world around them, and reminds them that art is not about perfection, but about expression. Above all, they believe in their stu-, and she believes in her students' potential and makes them feel proud of their creations, no matter how big or small. We are so grateful to have her at Pierceall High School.
If Mr. Martinez could present for our district employee of the month. So this, this employee of the month has really stepped up for us in a big way this year. If Ms. Lucero Sanchez could step up, please. Come up, Lucero. So many of you will recognize Lucero. She has been the behind the scenes for our board meetings, getting everything posted on YouTube, and working behind the computer with technology. And we asked her, or later this spring, right after I came onboard, we didn't have anybody to take care of webmastering and helping us with our presence and helping us tell the story of all the great things going on in Pierceall ISD. And I have, I am really proud of the work she's done, and board members have stopped and, and talked to me and sent notes and, and, you know, community members have said how nice it is to see smiling faces on the first day of school posted, and that, you know, some of the fun things she's done, interviewing the kids and getting their stories out, and, you know, we'll go to her and say, hey, could you make me an infographic about this, Ms. Lucero? Sure, it's done in five minutes. So she's helped us every campus, all of us, and we're just really, really proud of, of the work she's done, and this is just a little thank you and recognition for that, Ms. Sanchez. Thank you. Thank you, Lucero. And today, we would also like to take a moment, if we can have our technology department come up for a sec. And Adam, if you want to go ahead and, and read the technology certificates for them and each of their names, and let us recognize our technology department. Daniel, you can come up and talk too.
Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Spoor, members of the community, good afternoon. And here, this awards are going to be presented for fabulous technology department. They are the behind the scenes workers that we desperately and essentially need in order to be able to pull off a day. You don't realize how important technology is until it doesn't work. So when it comes down to it, we have a fantastic team. I've been able to encounter very much success with all of the things that are needing to be able to be addressed relatively quickly, and it's because of the hard work and dedication of these gentlemen up here. So congratulations, we have Mr. Daniel Garisar, technology director. Mr. Adrian Carizales. Mr. Joseph Esquivel. Mr. John J.T. Franklin. And unable to be with us here this evening, Mr. Martin Watson is our newest member to the technology department. So a round of applause for our technology.
Moving on to item six, a teacher incentive allotment presentations. Dr. Spoor?
Mr. President, as you all may be aware, the teacher incentive allotment was established with a goal of providing outstanding teachers an accessible pathway to a six-figure salary. And unlike previous programs, the teacher incentive allotment is not a grant. Through approved local designation systems, districts can identify and designate outstanding teachers based on student growth and classroom observations. Employing designated teachers generates extra funding for districts to reward top performers. This is funding from the state. And tonight, to present on the teacher incentive allotment, we have from Region 20, the teacher incentive allotment team of Christine Pettis and Valerie Solis to give us some information about the teacher incentive allotment. Ladies?
Can you hear me okay? Okay, wonderful. Good evening, President Aguilar, Superintendent Spoor, and Board Trustees. My name is Christine Pettis, and I'm the TIA Stakeholder Engagement Committee, House of Region 28 San Antonio, and this is my teammate Valerie Solis, who is a TIA Specialist in support of the TIA Team in Stakeholder Engagement. And we're part of a larger team that is centered. We're very grateful to have the upper committee to share some details about the teacher incentive allotment, about Pierceall and its applying and application. Can you also make it in the microphone so that you can hear it online? I should use the phone. Do you want me to take this one? Open my mic. Right, so we're going to provide an overview of TIA for you this evening. We have a very understanding of the plan. It's such an awesome opportunity for the teachers here in Pierceall, especially in recruiting, retaining, and rewarding your most effective educators.
And so a couple of important things to remember about the teacher incentive allotment is that this is not a grant-based initiative, so this, the monies that fund the allotments won't dry up. It's backed in statute through House Bill 3, and its purpose again is to make sure that we're rewarding those educators who are driving exceptional student outcomes, right, and adding value to their school district and campuses. The other piece is that, and this is something that we, we love to demystify, is that sometimes there may be a feeling that this might create some competition between educators, but what we have seen through a landscape analysis that we've done statewide as a stakeholder engagement team, is that this is fostering collaboration. And I wanted to share just a special side note. Valerie came to us and our team as a designated teacher in her previous two school districts, and so it's really insightful to hear from a teacher's perspective about how life-changing, right, this designation can be in terms of a professional pathway. And so, you know, in hearing her stories about how folks were reaching out to each other to see how they could enhance their own instructional practices, right, to deepen their own professional instructional delivery, and also, but most importantly, how students are performing in terms of growth. So just a real quick overview about how TIA works. There are three levels of designation. There's a recognized designation, an exemplary designation, and a master designation. Just want to add a quick side note, that beginning in school year 26, 27, TEA will be adding a fourth designation, which is the entry level one, which will be called acknowledged. And we can expect to hear from the agency a little bit later this year about some criteria around that. The allotment bands can range anywhere from $3,000 to $32,000, and that again will change in the future once the new acknowledged band comes into existence. And one of the purposes of TIA is that this is really helping to prioritize those hard-to-staff positions, especially in school districts where, you know, it may be harder for people to recruit teachers, right, and to retain them in their districts. And then, a big portion of this around how spending happens is, it's statutorily required that at least 90% of all allotments that are earned by a district go right back to the designated teachers or to the campus where that designated teacher was working. And then lastly, anytime a teacher earns a designation of either recognized, exemplary, or master, that designation is placed on their teaching certificate and is valid for five school years. So once a designation is earned, they will generate the allotment for that designation level for five years. Now, they can move up, so for example, if your Valerie were a recognized teacher, she would have that designation for five years, but let's say next school year, her data, both in student growth and teacher observation improved, and she was able to be designated at the next level up, which is exemplary, that means that her time clock would start over again, so it resets itself. So here are the three allotment bands right here. At the recognized level, a teacher can earn anywhere between $3,000 and $9,000. At the exemplary level, they can earn anywhere between $6,000 and $18,000, and at the master level, anywhere between $12,000 and $32,000. Now, this is all, this all looks different from campus to campus. There's an average allotment amount for Pierceall, and we'll go over that a little bit later in the presentation, but this is just a pretty general idea about how those bands are separated. So at its core, TIA in Pierceall would be comprised of three required pieces in your local designation system. So a local designation system is developed to include student growth measure, teacher observation, and a spending plan. So all, Pierceall is, is, Ms. Superintendent Spoor has been very strategic in this, right, knowing that we want to retain our best and our brightest, and so you're going to think first about what teaching assignments could we include as we begin to launch TIA? And so, understanding is that they're planning for 100% of teachers in this district to be eligible. So that means those teaching assignments would have to have a viable student growth measure, right, which can show students have grown from point A to point B, coupled with teacher performance data that includes observations that are scored, which is statutorily required, and then if the TIA Planning Committee deems some scored walkthroughs as well to complement that. And then lastly, this is where you come in, is the school board. The spending plan that's developed must be approved by the school board before that first payout happens. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about the approval process. This is what one of my colleagues likes to call a slow burn, because there's a little bit of lapse in time before the first payout happens. So right now, Pierceall is in the pre-application, planning, and applying stage. So this is a time where a district will engage stakeholders like the school board or the community, teacher groups, administrative groups, and give them an overview of TIA. In the spring, the application to apply for TIA is due on April 15th. So Superintendent Spoor, along with the TIA lead, and the TIA Planning Committee will have gone through several feedback, feedback and input sessions, right, to decide what's going to land on that application. TEA will notify school districts in August as to whether or not their application was approved, and then the district will immediately, next school year, 26, 27, go into their first round of data capture. So that's when we're capturing student growth data and teacher observation data. Then the subsequent school year, that data gets submitted to Texas Tech to make sure that it's valid, reliable, and that there's not a lot of skew. There needs to be correlation between how students are performing and how the teacher observations are looking, and then they will determine whether those teachers that have been put forth for designation are actually going to be designated. They submit that to TEA. TEA provides the final approval on that. The district is notified, and then those allotment dispersments are awarded based on that validity and reliability check. So every teacher has an opportunity to be designated. A lot of times, there's a misconception that certain types of teachers may not be eligible for a designation, for example, special education teachers. We hear that quite a bit. I'm a special ed teacher, I, I'm not eligible. I'm a special ed teacher, I'm not eligible. But really what's happening is teacher eligibility is tied to a data set, right? Not necessarily a teacher roster, but a data set. And so, a teacher must, one, have an eligible year of teaching service, meaning they were teaching for at least 50% of the time over the course of a year, or 100% of the time for one semester. They must be coded in PEMS as a teacher, so that's 087 for coding, right? And then they must meet all of the criteria that Pierceall sets out in its local designation system. Okay, this is a really great visual in terms of communicating to the school community, to teachers, to campus administrators, district-level leaders, and the school board about how teacher assignments will be phased in. But since Pierceall is going in 100%, there really isn't a phase in. Everything is happening in that first school year of '26, '27, which is fantastic. So we'll talk a little bit about teacher observations. Since Pierceall is using T-Tests, that's wonderful. That's a TEA-approved observation instrument. When teachers are in an eligible assignment to potentially earn a designation, there are no waivers that are permitted. So, in some school districts, teachers may have a waiver where they're not formally observed, right? For a number of years. Here, everyone will have to be observed using T-Tests, right? Teachers must earn at least a proficient on their observations, that's the floor. And the ratings from Domains 2, which is instruction, and Domains 3, which is classroom environment on the T-Test rubric, are the ones that are used for determining designation relative to the teacher observation. So, the beautiful thing about this is this isn't tied to student achievement. It's tied to student growth, right? So how impactful are teachers' instructional practices and methods and strategies driving those student outcomes? So, we're looking ideally, right, that every student is showing one year's worth of growth, right? And then hopefully, going to reward those teachers when we see that correlation between their impact on student growth and their teacher observation results. Okay, I want to talk a little bit about the four approved student growth measures that TEA has approved. The first is a student learning objective, or SLOs as they're called. This one allows a district to set student growth targets, and you can evaluate a student's growth based on a body of evidence. The next one is a portfolio. We see a lot of this with fine arts teachers and fine arts departments, where there is a specific skill set that a teacher is looking for, and progress on that skill set is determined by the criteria in the rubric. There are pre- and post-tests. So, a pre-test is administered at the start of the year, one at the end of the year, and then you're looking for the growth that happened in between. And then there's a value-added model. And that's where a student's anticipated growth score is bumped up against testing data, right? From across this number of years, relative to how students that are like that one would grow. I'm going to pause for a second because I've been talking quite a bit. Are there any questions so far? Okay, awesome. So, these are some guidance measures around statewide performance standards. So, when we talk about the three levels, let's start with recognized. The state has conducted their own study around about how many teachers in the state are typically at the recognized level, and it's typically the top 33%. And that is driven by at least them earning 74% of the possible points on T-Tests, or a proficient with accomplished, right, ratings. And at least 55% of the students in a teacher's charge have made growth, 55% or more. And so, we would follow that same pattern with exemplary. That's usually the top 20% of teachers in the state, right? They've earned at least a 3.9 or 78% of the possible points on their T-Tests, and at least 60% or more of their kiddos have shown growth. And then lastly, the master level. That's typically the top 5% of teachers in the state. And they're mostly accomplish and distinguish on their T-Test observations, and at least 70% or more of their kiddos have shown growth in one school year. Right. And so, this is a guide, right, that the state sets, but it's not mandatory. Your TIA Planning Committee, right, will talk about those and establish what your performance standards will be. And it could even look different for every student growth measure. That's the autonomy that a school district has to make. Okay, another piece that districts have the autonomy to incorporate is called an optional component system. So we have some districts that say, we really want to focus on staff attendance, right? We want to make sure that we're enhancing our staff attendance. So they'll build in an optional component that takes a look at staff attendance as one of the criteria that their teachers must meet. It's not required, but it's optional. So I just wanted to share that that is out there if Pierceall decides that it meets the needs of this district. Want to talk a little bit about the spending plan. So again, it's statutorily required that at least 90% of the allotments that are generated go directly to teachers at the campuses, right, where they earn their designation. Another piece that I want to share about the monies that teachers earn from allotment, that money is also considered in their retirement pay. So if a teacher, let's say we have a teacher who's a master teacher and is earning a six-figure salary, earning $95,000 because of the allotment, that is put into their top five years of earning power. So that's very impactful in terms of what that looks like for them in retirement. So we've been doing a landscape analysis with districts across the state, and I can't tell you how many times we've heard districts say, it has changed the way we're retaining teachers. It has changed the way we're recruiting them. I've had teachers who were going to retire, and they're saying, nope, I'm going to hang out five more years because I've earned this, and it's going to impact how my life looks like once I step away from teaching. So it really is a life-changing measure for many teachers. Okay, so this graphic right here just shows you what is allowed in the 90% of spending and what is allowed when districts, if a district chooses to retain 10%. So some districts say we want 100% to go to our teachers. Some say we want 95% to go, and some say 90 will go to teachers, 10% will stay with the district. The key things to remember are this. If, when the district retains 10%, they may only use those funds for TIA-related activities. So that might be to pay for third-party assessments that you're using for your student growth measures. It might pay for professional development that's tied directly to the teacher incentive allotment, right? It might pay for a stipend for a person who is working exclusively on TIA, right? And it's not, it's not just given to someone, right, as an extra stipend. What it cannot be used for is to pay for things like copy paper, you know, administrative-type things like that. So, now we have some campus principals that are in the audience, and this is a really key piece of information to take. There is a TIA funding map that is on the TIA webpage, and that is publicly accessible to anyone. And you can look up any school system in the state of Texas, and you can see what their anticipated funding looks like for the district. But you can also drill down and see each campus. So you can see what the anticipated funding would look like at the high school for a recognized teacher, an exemplary teacher, a master teacher, the intermediate school, the junior high, and the elementary. So what's important to know about this, principals, is that the base allotment is where everyone starts. And then, the state considers the campus socioeconomic level coupled with the campus's rural status, right? And they use a formula to determine what the range of money will be that's paid out for each of those levels at each campus. And I say that's important to know because sometimes teachers may ask, well, you know, why is the elementary school teacher at a recognized level earning more than the high school teacher at the recognized level? And this is the formula that the state uses to determine those allotment amounts. Okay, so, speaking of the anticipated funding, we pulled this straight from the TIA website. It has, again, the funding averages here for the district, bless you. You'll see all three of the designation levels at the bottom. Pierceall is considered a traditional district, right, with an average enrollment there. Again, this is available for public viewing, and anyone can take a look at the funding map. We also think it's really important for the HR departments to be taking a look at this because as more and more of our regional districts are becoming a part of TIA, right? Districts are looking to retain designated teachers, and teachers are shopping around to see, you know, who's in TIA? What are the allotments amounts that are being awarded, right? And so this is a really strategic move for HR to be using, and also for campus principals when you're in those interview panels, right? Okay, we don't want you to think about TIA as another thing to do, but rather how it complements and enhances what Pierceall is already doing, right? So, you know, we noticed their statement there, leading the way. We will be the recognized leaders in preparing students for life, college, and careers. What that suggests to me is you're providing robust, rigorous experiences for students, right? Through effective instructional practices. And so, TIA complements that through the student growth measure options and also T-Tests. And this is just a recap of what I've talked about here on this slide. We want to see enhanced student outcomes, right, as a result of this and all other work that you're already doing. We talked about retention and how this is impacting, there is a correlation between designated teachers and retention that we're seeing across the state. We're also seeing that districts are able to use this as a recruitment leverage strategy. We want to be able to recruit, retain, and reward our most bright, our brightest teachers. We talked about incentivizing those hard-to-staff positions, right, in high-need schools. We also talked about the collaboration that exists between teachers, right? And working together to help each other to earn that designation. And then also being competitive, right, in the teaching market. Right, here's another timeline. We wanted to take you through a step-by-step scenario of what this would look like for Pierceall. So, right now, you're in the planning stage. The application for TIA will need to be submitted by April 15th at 11:59 PM. Superintendent Spore is awesome, and I know your TIA Lead is awesome too, and I know that will be in well before. The TEA will notify districts of application acceptance in August, and then the district will immediately go into what's called data capture year, or year two. It's the first year of implementation. So all of next school year, there will be data captured around student growth measures and teacher observations, which includes the formal observation and walkthroughs. And then after that year is finished, there will be data analyzation in preparation for submitting in October of 2027. So in October of 2027, data for the '26, '27 school year will be sent to Texas Tech. Once that goes through the validation process, and once it's verified and approved, they notify TEA. TEA will notify the districts, right, in the spring to say, hey, this is your list of approved designated teachers. This is what we're anticipating their allotment amount will be. And I'm sure you've probably seen on social media and the news and stuff where districts have a celebratory way, right, of recognizing those teachers. Those monies that are generated must be spent by August 31st of every year. So, next year, you're starting, but teachers won't see their first payout until the summer of 2028, if that's how you choose it to be on your spending plan. And then every year after that, it just becomes cyclical. You can expect that that payout will happen again right around the summertime, right, in that window in there. So, just looking ahead to the rest of the school year, we want to say that Pierceall is well ahead of the game. Typically, districts aren't gearing up and engaging stakeholders till around October. So we think it's phenomenal that we're having an opportunity to share this. We know that there will be some overviews for your campus administrators. There will be overviews for teachers at the campus level, perhaps your community, and that there will be a TIA Planning Committee development that's happening. There are a number of technical assistance sessions that the district can participate in while they're in the application phase. There's the application launch that happens in the spring. We'll continue to prep administrators through our regional team to make sure that they're calibrated and aligned and ready for T-Test execution, because it's a different way of thinking about it, right? When we're tying observations to money, right, and to student growth. So it's really planning and have a solid foundation for that. And then, of course, executing all of that during the '26, '27 school year, and then preparing for that data submission. Any questions? It's a lot of information to take in, but... Oh man, this is the first time we haven't had a question, wow. Yeah, there will be questions. And just so you know, and so our campus administrators and any teachers that are in the audience knows, are, so there's a huge team at the Service Center. By huge, I mean six people. And we have four folks who work regionally with all of our school districts and charters, right? That come out and do the overviews, that come out and do the calibration activities, go into more depth around data and student growth measures. And then our focus is around stakeholder engagement. So what we're doing right now is our jam. We love to talk to people about TIA and its value and its impact. And just in our study through the landscape analysis, how it's really changing how school districts are able, right, to keep their best and their brightest, you know, who are impacting students' lives in a great way. Thank you so much for your time. Yes, sir. Yes. They continue in their timeline, right? So they'll continue, and let's say they came to Pierceall as a recognized teacher, right? And they generated data, right? They had student growth data and teacher observation data that may have earned them a level up to exemplary or even master. It would restart their five-year time clock. Their allotment amount is driven by what the funding, the anticipated funding is for their campus. So if they're at the, excuse me, Pierceall's elementary school, the allotment that they generate is driven by where they're at. You're welcome. That's a great question. Thank you so much.
Moving on to item 6B, Special Education Update, Jennifer Poppy.
Mr. Board President, we have our Director of Special Education, Jennifer Poppy, to give us an update on special education programs here in Pierceall this year.
Testing this one, can you hear this one? Is there echo? One, two, testing good? Okay. Okay, good evening, guys. So I have to say, when Ms. Spore reached out to me about coming to present, she told me just to do a quick overview, five to seven minutes. And I immediately asked for more than seven minutes. I was like, I have a lot to share. So I'm going to try to go very quickly. But I also want to be very transparent about where we're going with special education in the district. We have a lot of great things in place. So the first thing I'm going to start with is just a basic overview of numbers for you guys. So currently, we're sitting at about 422 students enrolled that are receiving special education services. Broke it down by campus, just so you can kind of see, we're at about 117 at the high school. These numbers may be changing a little bit. We've had some enroll or withdraw the last few days. Our junior high is sitting at 126, intermediate's at 125, and TFE, I actually think we got two more. So I think we're at like 56 now. About 18 of those have been transfers into the district. And right now, we have about 18 referrals in the process that may or may not become ours. So when I first came to Pierceall, the first thing that I wanted to do is take the opportunity to go and meet at the campuses with all of the administrators. I wanted to get a big picture of where we needed to go, what my job, what my role would be. I had a great experience. I have never worked with a more cohesive team of administrators, so I have to say that. Being in another district for, you know, a long period of time... Being in another district for, you know, a long period of time, you work with a lot of people in and out. Every single one of our administrators was willing, eager to have conversations with me, willing to work with me, and gave me a lot of feedback. What I took from that is I feel like the direction that we need to go, some of the goals I've set for myself, for my department, it seemed that we were lacking a lot of communication across the district. It seemed like we needed to have more guidance on laws, the legal formalities of special education, what we can and can't do, and also just building alignment across all of our campuses. So, those are the three things that I'm really focusing on this year that I really want to get going for us. So, the first thing that I did is I did set up some... We spent a great deal of time on that. So, you know, to be transparent with that, I'm expecting a lot of data-driven referrals. I don't, we don't want just referrals based off of one thing that we see. There has to be data there to support why we're referring the student. We did talk about the process. I know that that's come up a lot, you know, why does it take so long? So, typically, it takes 45 days. Once the referral is in our hands and we have the consent from the parent, it takes 45 days for our LSSP, who we contract, to conduct her testing. Then at the end of that 45 days, then we have another 30 days to come to art. I can tell you the coming to art part comes faster because we have open slots in our schedules where we can, we can get that in quicker. Where the real delay happens is that 45-day window of testing, okay? But we are working with our LSSPs. We have a couple of emergency referrals that we kind of push through with some of our little three-year-olds because we very obviously could tell that we needed to push this through. So, we're working on that end. Another thing that I wanted to do was really get out to the campuses and conduct observations. I wanted to see for myself. I wanted to talk to the teachers, talk with my paras, get to know them, get to observe the kids in the classroom. So, I'm, hopefully, the administrators will agree, I'm trying to get out to those campuses every other week at least to touch base, just to see how things are going, set up some staffings to discuss situations with students or with staff, whatever we may need. I just want those lines of communication open. And then the other thing is we have our Region 20 empathy interviews going on. So, those actually came to a close this last week. And then I also request that Region 20 come out and do a campus needs assessment. So, they've been meeting with staff. They've been asking what are our needs on campus. So, there's been a lot of interviews going on. I think we're tired of interviews. I think we have a lot of good data. I don't have the formal report back, but the feedback verbally from Region 20 was great. They saw a lot of great things on campuses. Some of the things that they would flag as a concern, which I was impressed there were not a lot, but they are things that we already have, we already know, we have on the radar, and that the things that I'm going to talk about next that we're putting in place are going to correct those things. So, Region 20 was very impressed with that, that that's, we're already heading there. And then lastly, we do have our district-wide community survey that's out right now, and that closes on Friday. That's part of the empathy interviews and just the department's program overview that we, that were requested last year. So, once all that feedback is back, then they will give me a final report on that. So, that's what I've been doing so far district-wide. So, as for SED, in-house, my SED department, we did start out the year. I conducted some professional training with my teachers. I included my inclusion, paras and teachers together, trained them separately from my unit, teachers and paras, and then my art facilitators have had some separate trainings as well, so that we could really have time in a smaller environment and really get to touch base on things that we need to be doing consistently. We've also incorporated bi-weekly department meetings. So, those department meetings are within my own staff. They're with my art facilitators. They're with my assessment staff. We're going over data. We're looking at compliance, doing lots of compliance checks. Okay, where are we at on this art? Is it on the schedule? Yes, good. Okay, let's get that down. Our bi-weekly assessment meetings, same, same situation. We're discussing timelines, evaluations, when they're due, and when we have them scheduled. Three areas that I'll talk about a little bit later that are part of our cap review is our PATH, which is the Present Levels of Academic Achievement and Functional Performance, our Writing of Goals, and then our Prior Written Notice. Those are three areas that have come up in our cap review. So, those are three areas that we've had extensive training on. One of the first things that I did when I came in is look for the areas of need and offer those trainings. If we need further training, we would go to Region 20. But I can tell you right now, the next thing on the list is Compliance Checklist. And I have already probably checked 20 arts at least that have been processed and come through my office, and they look great. They look amazing. So, the things that we've been putting in place, a lot of them were already in place. There just wasn't a compliance check in place to catch those clerical errors that then triggered cap reviews. So, the compliance check is two. We have two compliance checks. The first set goes through my secretary, and she's just doing a basic check of the art paperwork. She's looking for blanks. She's making sure the dates are correct. Everything is matching in that area. Then it comes to me, and I'm looking at the meat of the art. Are these services supporting the needs of the student? Are our PATHs, are our goals, are our priorities, are they aligned? Do we have all the components that we need to have in the art paperwork? Once that clears, then it's good to go. And then we're also working to set up a community meeting. That's something that I want to do for the fall and spring. So, I'm hoping here in a few weeks to have that on the schedule. First, we'll be like, meet the director, come meet our staff, just like this. Come see where we're going. What's the direction for the district? All right, I'm pretty excited about these next two slides. So, we are going to be implementing some new programs. One of the things I noticed is that we didn't have a curriculum for our ALE units, which we all refer to life skills. Now, they're called, hold on, Alternative Learning Environment. My brain slipped. It's been a long day. And then we are also going to be looking at contracting Behavior Intervention Services through stepping stones. Another area that I assessed was a need for somebody who can really support us behaviorally on the campuses, our teachers and our staff. So, the Unique Learning System, and I just wanted to put down some key features. Standards are aligned content through monthly lessons, differentiated instruction. So, what's really neat about this program? We were using it in my former district, and the ALE teachers absolutely loved it. And one of the things they loved about it is that there's actually three levels within each grade level. So, it's going to really help meet the individual needs of the students. And then the interactive and accessible materials. They have lots of adapted literature pieces that go with it. One of the greatest things they love is the data-driven progress monitoring. It's going to track the student growth, and it stays with them the whole time that we have the program, the whole time that they go through the different grade levels here in Pierceaw. This is another great perk to this particular program. Benchmarking assessments are approved for the teacher incentive allotment that they just talked about. So, it gives, in special education, it's difficult for special education teachers to be a part of TIA. We have to get really creative. Being teacher of record, this program is aligned to that and supports it. So, it makes it a lot easier for ALE teachers to be able to qualify for that TIA. And then it also takes the data, all that beginning year assessments that they're talking about and showing growth, it will track that for them, for the teachers. And then, of course, most importantly, it's supporting our kiddos. Life skills and transition support. A lot of the lessons are developed around independence, forming independence for our students, helping with the communication skills, and then getting them ready for employability one day. So, the Behavior Interventionist Role is something that we had incorporated in my previous district. It's really beneficial. It's hard to get out to all the campuses and put out all the fires daily. And what I'm noticing is our behavior needs are growing. It's everywhere. It's nice to be able to have somebody to offer those intervention strategies to those teachers. I've had a lot of teachers, a lot of paras, a lot of admin reach out to me. I've gotten out there. We've done assessments. We've done observations. We've talked about how to implement things. But we really need somebody there to support us. So, we looked within our budget, and I've contracted, I just signed the contract on both of, with both groups Friday. So, I'm hoping in the next week or two, we will have a BCBA, which is a Board Certified Behavior Analyst out here. We're still working out the hours, but I'd like them out, they're going to be out at the campuses, and they're going to be helping us out with strategies, offering strategies to our teachers, working with our students. One of the main things that I want to push with this contract service is that they're not there, they are going to work with the kids, but they're there to build capacity within our own staff, to teach our own staff how to work with these students, how to implement the VIP strategies. Also, transportation. I know we've had some concerns with transportation behaviors on the bus. They're going to get on the bus, and they're going to ride routes, and they're going to work with our staff on how to implement strategies to keep our kids safe, keep our staff safe. So, I'm really excited to have this on board. I think that's all about that one. Okay, so, I wanted to really talk about this cap review thing. A corrective action plan, it's been around for a while, obviously, 2324. I don't want this cap review to set a bad perception of our department. Our department is doing a really phenomenal job. They're back here supporting. I don't, I can't express to you guys that this cap review that we're in is not a reflection of our quality of work in Pierceaw. Our guys know what they're doing. It's more a reflection of not having the right guidance and not having monitoring systems in place. If those monitoring systems are in place, these corrective action plans don't occur. And if they do occur, it's for really simple things. So, the 2324, it is officially cleared. All corrections have been submitted. It's just pending the clarification process, which is happening this week. Now, what happened with the 2324 is that it initially was not corrected. So, that correct, that non-correction triggered an uncorrected non-compliance cap, which is the second cap that we're in, and it's due by February 28th of 2026. I can already tell you now, all these caps will be closed out well before the dates up there, because we're already, the things that we put in place are already heading in that direction to get us there. The uncorrected non-compliance just needs a couple of correction arts done, which we're going to do when they have their annual art, and that one will be closed out. Now, what triggered the targeted cap of 202425 is that when they went in to look at the uncorrected cap and they were reviewing those folders, they found other errors, okay? They found clerical errors. They found a perfect art, goals are written perfect, but guess what? We forgot to check that little box that says progress reports will be monitored every six weeks. And that put us into an area of a targeted cap. Okay, so, our compliance checks that we now have in place with myself and my secretary, they're catching those things. So, they're easy cleanups. So, I just want to be very, very clear that it's not a reflection of the work that our staff is doing. We, I have, in 21 years of education, in special education, I have honestly, I've been over a lot of, a lot of teachers and a lot of art facilitators, and I can honestly, truly, wholeheartedly say that this is the best working group I've ever had. The hardest working. They're here late. They are proud of their work, and I just, I just want that known, that as we're in these cap reviews. So, the cap reviews, I'm meeting bi-weekly with our TEA rep and our Region 20. They're supporting me. They're guiding me. Maybe too much, because it gets all confused, but we are good on that end, reviewing and updating policies. We're doing procedures. The self-monitoring pieces are already in place, and we're correcting those arts for compliance. The takeaway that I've had from Region 20 and TEA is that I'm too far ahead of them because we have to follow the steps, like do this first, do that first. I'm like, I've already trained them. I've already looked through their paperwork. It's ready to go. So, those are things that a director should do when they first come in. So, we had already hit it from the ground running when I came in, and now it's all aligning, and it's just a matter of submitting all of the corrections, which we will be doing this next year. Do you guys have questions for me? Oh, gosh. Right now, I can't give you a number. My biggest concern is TFE. We've filled, we do not, we have one teacher at TFE. Please help me out here.
Here we are, Lasky, a licensed teacher at ATPCD, which is the ATFE teacher.
Yes.
At intermediate, we are now filled. At junior high, we're receiving a bailing teacher. And at the high school, we are complete.
Yes. On some of those camp, on the junior high campus, we do have, right now, a para who is, will be done in December. So, we have the possibility of a teacher there. My biggest concern area now is TFE getting, and we just met today, I met with Ms. Velasquez today to talk about some things that we can do to utilize our staff better. So, that is a work in progress. So, my eyes are on that campus as far as getting teachers, trying to recruit and get more teachers there.
My next question is, is there a type of training for subs to pick up a SED class?
That is something that I can get with Region 20 on, and there's something there. We can find something for our subs, yes, to have proper training.
That would be good for those who would be interested in...
Okay. Absolutely. Yeah.
I definitely believe that, I mean, it's a safe thing to do, and, you know, yeah, it benefits our students.
And even if Region 20 can't come in, it can be a training that I can do. I have information that I can provide to train our subs on IEP implementation, FERPA, FAPE, our Free and Appropriate Publication, what we can and can't do with students. That was part of my presentation to the staff. So, I can do the same presentation to subs. But let me also get with Region 20 and see if there is some kind of formal training that we can put our subs through.
Especially with the behavioral.
Absolutely, yes.
So, in the past, we've had some big concerns from parents that they are not knowledgeable on arts.
That the parents are not? And that's why I want to have community meetings, so that we can inform our parents. And one of the things that I want to do at this first meeting is I have a list of trainings that are available. They're free. They're virtual through Region 20 that the parents can log in, and it nails all of that. Like, what are my rights as a parent?
There was some kind of requirement for a parent to go through it and to check off on the checklist that they've gone through it.
Because I attended couples last year, and you had like one parent that attended the community training or...
Oh, that attended our community meeting?
Training or community meeting. You had a couple of board members and one parent.
Okay. So, how do we get them more involved?
Yes, maybe something that is required of them to attend. I don't know if that's something you can do or...
If I can jump in on that, that's... After our meeting on Monday that we advertised quite a bit, we offered dinner. We didn't have a big turnout. We're going to, sometimes parents show up if we're going to put their kiddo on a stage and have a little performance. You know, there's some things we can do to make it kind of a, you know, more of a benefit for the parents. They're getting a little something out of it as well, and, you know, we're willing to go meet them where they are. We'll meet them at night. We'll meet them during the day. We can have some of these meetings, and, you know, if one of the churches want to offer an afternoon there, too. There's lots of things we can do. So, we will, we will do our best, and we welcome any input anybody has on things we can do that would encourage folks to come to some of the opportunities that we're giving them to learn more about their children's schooling.
And if you guys have ideas, feel free to reach out to me and email me. Let me know. We can work together.
I think you have an amazing team. Are you walking to something great?
Oh, I, yes, I, yes.
And thank you for taking on the chaos.
It's been good. And there's days where I'm like, ah! But let me tell you, as a whole, I love this. It's great. We have, we have a lot of great students. We have a lot of great staff. We just need, they needed the right guidance and support. I'm telling you, communication is everything. Communication, everything, so...
I just want to make one last thing. I know I love the idea...
I just want to make one last thing. I know I, I love the idea of possibly reaching out to parents and kind of them informing them of, these are your rights, you know, for your child with, as far as their educational settings and needs. But I also always want to keep our community in mind that not only do our parents possibly need the training, but also they need it in bilingual.
Yes, yes.
That's another thing to consider. I know, again, it's another demand, but I think it's just the best way to serve our, our parents, our community about their child's education needs.
Also, part of that, just so y'all know, when you, when the parents go to ARDs, they do also get a handout. They get their safeguards and they get their rights to the education process, to the ARD process. Again, it's a booklet that's this thick that they're not reading through, but we do give them that. That, that is a requirement at all ARDs. But yes, uh-huh, yes, I, I understand that. You're good.
So I sat here and I, I looked at your data that you presented with in comparison to our number of students that we have enrolled at Pierceall ISD. So basically, our special ed program is servicing about 22% of our student population. What percent of that population would you say is actually being dismissed, or that we're actually exiting?
Yeah, so that's another thing that we have talked about when I first came in. Something that, I'm looking at a couple of things. One, we are streamlining that process when we have their reevaluations. Do we need to do formal testing, lead assessment? Ms. Loretta has been great about that, and Ms. Teresa, they created a list for me at the beginning of the year, and they went through each kiddo to see, okay, when was this kid's last testing? Okay, they just had it three years ago, so we can read them, but then when they come up to this one, we're going to need to do full testing on them. That's the conversation we've had, is we really need to be monitoring in these ARDs, the services. You know, student qualifies under math calculation only, why are we supporting them with English when they're doing great in English? They don't need any minutes there, they don't need support there. So really aligning the services to what the kid needs. If they don't, if they need to be retested and not qualified, then we do that. That's the route we go. Another area that I'm really looking at is our ALE, our life skills program. We have a lot of very high functioning students in our ALE units, students that we need to be transitioning out more. And I will use Ms. Baker as an example. We just had a very successful, I think it's been successful, when I checked yesterday, it was still successful, a very successful transition from our autism unit back out to her campus. Phenomenal. They did, we did a staffing first. I attended the staffing, everybody was there that needed to be there, facilitator, campus administrative team, and then we staffed first, and then we were prepared when we went to the ARD. The ARD was tense at times, and we did have to go back and forth a little bit to meet in the middle, but parent was happy when they walked out of there, school campus was happy. Most importantly, the, the student is getting what they need. And so he's back out on his campus. We have a plan in place where he's transitioning for two to three weeks. If he does well, then we're going to look at adding more time back out on the Gen Ed campus. Right now, he's going back and forth, so we're going to be extending that time until our goal is for him to be full-time at the end of the year. So that's something that I'm huge on. I want to get our kids appropriately placed, make sure that they're having access to those socialization skills. Question has come up about possibly placing some three or four-year-olds at the autism unit. I'm getting more guidance on that from my LSSP, but initially, my feeling is no. We need to work with them on the campus, because a huge part of that age is socialization, and especially when you're dealing with autism. If you're not providing them those social skills that they need, they may not develop them. So if we automatically put them into an autism unit where those are older kids that already don't, we know they're not going to develop their social skills, then we might have done a disservice to that three-year-old. So we need to let them grow and then make those decisions later when they're like hitting intermediate age. Then we start looking, okay, they're still not speaking, these behaviors are still severe, now we need to talk about maybe the autism unit. But we need to try our resources out on the campuses, and that's the reason why I want to bring in a behavior consultant, because if I'm expecting this from my staff, then I need to provide them with the proper tools and the proper guidance to help implement these procedures that I want to put in place. There's not one in place. We currently do not have an ALE curriculum. We have different curriculums on the, the teachers are creating their own lesson plans on the campuses or utilizing the Gen Ed and then modifying it down, right? So I wanted a ALE curriculum-based lesson. Now, some of those students may not need completely the ALE curriculum. We may be, because they're high functioning and we need to work on getting them out, so we may be able to supplement with the regular lessons that are still coming in. It'll be a mixture of both, but at least that ALE curriculum will guide us to what we really, really need in those units, the structure. Give us the structure and give my staff the support, because I know the staff has felt overwhelmed, like what do I do? This kid needs this, and this kid needs that, and that kid needs that. It's very individualized, and I'm just a para, I'm not a teacher. So I want to provide them with a curriculum guidance. You're welcome.
Thank you for your report. It was very good.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right, we'll be moving on to item 6C, Senate Bill 12 update. Ms. Rodriguez and Monica Villarreal.
Yes, sir. Mr. Board President, folks, we have a lot of new legislation that came out of this last session, and one of them is Senate Bill 12. And so Mr. Martinez is going to come up with our lead counselor. I'm not sure if Ms., was Ms. Monica able to make it? She was, she was at a region meeting about this very thing today. We have a lot of new procedures that we follow, and Senate Bill 12 is one of the biggies. So we asked if they would come give a, a quick update on that.
Yeah, as we are going to be able to go through here, the presentation, one of the things that we are experiencing, just like a lot of the school districts in the state of Texas, is that we are very much being able to move forward from the 89th legislative session. Some of the things that have been enacted into law after September 1st have been very easily implemented, and others have been quite a challenge. So the things that are going on right now are very much, we're needing guidance from the state. We are working with our organizations and agencies in order to be able to get that information to be able to meet the letter of the law, but right now, some of the, the laws that have been passed have been interpreted quite differently across the state of Texas. And we are really, as a whole state, with the school personnel, we're, we're really trying to be able to sort through what is the actual intent of those laws that they've put into place. And so one of the things that we are working towards is Senate Bill 12, and as we're able to get the presentation up over here, we've been working in conjunction with our counseling department and our nursing department here at Pierceall ISD, and we're going to be continuing to do so. I'm going to allow Ms. Rodriguez to be able to mention a little bit of things here, and then we'll be able to kind of just address where we're at currently here in Pierceall ISD. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Rodriguez.
Do I need both of these? Okay, so in summary regarding health-related services, because Senate Bill 12 covers a lot of services related to parents' rights, but in summary regarding health-related services, the Senate Bill 12 mandates a parent parental rights form be distributed and at enrollment in early each school year, detailing parents' abilities to opt out or withhold consent regarding curriculum, instructional materials, health education, immunizations, gifted and talented programs, and more. Schools must notify parents and obtain written consent before providing any mental, emotional, or physical health services. If consent is withheld, students cannot access services and must be picked up by parents for assistance. So Pierceall ISD's response, this was, came into effect September 1st. So on the 5th, the district sent out a notice of consent for school services form for all parents, guardian and guardians via Thrill Share and on the website, and then campuses distributed the paper copies and asked that they be returned as soon as possible. So this is just, these are images of what the actual form that, that was created by Tasby and then was just modified for, for Pierceall ISD. This is what it looks like. It is, I believe it is still on the website, if I'm not sure. And then this is a copy of the consent form for parents to sign. We included, or Mr. Martinez included, the counseling-related question as well as the health-related question on one form, so it would be a little bit easier for parents to fill out. So. There is a question regarding counseling services. It says, I acknowledge Pierceall ISD has provided the required notice and opportunity to grant or deny consent regarding school-based health-related services for students. And the top question is, I consent to my child receiving routine school-based health-related services. I understand the consent may be revoked anytime in writing, or I do not consent. And then the second question says, I acknowledge that Pierceall ISD has provided the required notice and opportunity to grant or deny consent regarding mental health-related services for students for the school year. So the parent would either say that they consent to the completion of the document, or that they don't.
One of the things that we're working with our nursing staff, because Ms. Benavides, I'm actually very happy that you brought that up, because of the fact, we are running into some of those things on a daily basis. And one of the things that we are working towards is our nursing lead, Ms. Monica Villarreal. She has been able to attend a lot of sessions already, and there are, again, mixed guidance at best in regards to what it is that is going to be allowed, or what is going to be going forward, how are we going to be able to navigate this situation. One of the things that we have learned, and one of the things we've also guided our nursing department on, is you're always going to be in the best interest to be able to communicate with parents. You're always going to be able to be in your best interest to be able to talk to the parent about what is going on, what is the situation that brings their child to the nursing office, and be able to get that communicated very clearly to the parent. We want to be able to get that parent to provide the written consent for us to be able to administer those things that are needed for their child at the time, and that's what we're going to be working on, trying to be able to get that very much in place. We don't want to have any surprises in regards to, well, my child went to the nurse's office and I was unaware of it. I think with the core of what we're trying to be able to do, we're going to have, at the heart, we're going to be able to communicate very well with parents, and we're not going to deviate away from that. So regardless of how we're having to adapt and change and be flexible with the current expectations of how the law was written, we're going to continue to communicate with parents and make sure that parents are fully aware of the things that brings their child to the nurse's office.
I would think that because we're all legally obligated to report abuse, and now it's 24-hour window of time where you have to report abuse, I would think that, that like an abuse situation would supersede this, because if you are going to report an abuse situation, you're not necessarily going to call the parent in a normal situation. Like, for myself, I try to contact parents as much as I can, even, you know, so-and-so wasn't feeling well. Like, in the past, before this, I've noticed a change in, in your child, and I just want to bring it up to you, because that's the parent and that's their, that's who's going to care about them more than anything. But I think the answer to your question is it can't, this can't stop anyone from reporting abuse.
Just clarify, any, any case that we suspect child abuse must be reported by the person who suspects it. Any case of first aid needing to be administered, first aid will be administered. The law said this must become effective September 1, and then on Monday, we received word of clarification, and Jameson Baker, our attorney, sent out more information. We're still waiting on more information. So we're trying to go with our best, because the verbiage in the law says, before any and all counseling and health services, and so we created this form. Don't mean it formal. We said, well, all means all. And they said, but that's not our intent. So right now, what they're doing is trying to go back and get clarification on the intent, make sure that we're doing matches the intent of the law. In the meantime, we're going to do the right thing, and we're going to ask parents to please give us permission. When we're able to, in the case of an emergency, we will, we will do what's right for the child, but we will always inform parents.
The things that we're also trying to be able to get is a streamlined process of who has their forms filled out and who does not have their forms filled out. And so we're actually working also to be able to make that information readily available to the personnel that needs it. A couple of options that we've had are some spreadsheets that would be kept on the campus space. Also, we were also wanting to explore the option of being able to have it in our student information system, our sender system, see how we might be able to integrate another feature, like a local program type of feature, where it would be accessible for the personnel that would need it, and it would also be tied to the student and their record and their profile for our sender. So we're working on trying to be able to have that. As we're going through this whole process, again, it's, we're having to develop these things as we're experiencing them. And so some of the things are going to come a little bit easier than others, while some others are going to be a little bit slower. In some cases, the tried and true saying, you got to go slow to go fast. We're going to have to be able to work through those. But at the core, as Dr. Spur mentioned, we're here to do what's right for kids.
I just want to also point out, too, like in the, in high school, especially in the situation where a student might say that they're wanting to end their life. If we, before this, if we had that situation and we needed to call the crisis hotline, they will not come and conduct an assessment unless we've already contacted the parent and have the parent for their consent as well. So there's nothing, everything is for the benefit of the kids and the parents, so they can make that decision. That's it.
Moving on to item 6D, monthly financial report. Mrs. Fernandez.
Thank you. This is an overview of the financials for August 2025. For 1XX general fund financials, this information includes our athletic pool, band, and general maintenance and operating fund. This shows the revenue that was budgeted for the year with the sources over on the left-hand side, which include our local intermediate revenue, state program revenue, and program, federal program revenue as well. So the annual budget was 25.7 million is what we estimated our revenue to be. What we actually received was 26.9 million, and so we had an excess of revenue of 1.2 million. Over on the far right column is a percentage of each of those categories. So for instance, the largest percentage was from revenue generated from our So for instance, the largest percentage was from revenue generated from our local intermediate revenue, which includes the taxes. It was 61.4% of all revenue received. This shows the 1XX General Fund financial information for expenditures by function. On the left-hand side, you'll have the function numbers as well as the descriptions for each one. The next column shows the budgeted amounts per function with a total of 30.1 million budgeted from all the, all the functions included. On the next column is the breakdown of the expenditures by each function, the total of 26.2 million expended for the '24-'25 school year. Then the next column, over two columns over, shows what was left, what was unspent in each function. And at the bottom, it shows 3.9 million was unspent. Now, that seems like a lot, and if you look, the majority of that was in function 11, but that was in payroll, so it was over budgeted in payroll. It's always better to be safe when you're budgeted in payroll in case you have raises, the stipends, additional staff hired throughout the year. So actually, out of that 1.9 that was left over, about 1.3 of that was for payroll cost. The next column shows the percentage of each of those functions in relation to the total expenditures. So again, then function 11 for instruction was the biggest portion of not only the budgeted amount, but also of the actual expenditures. 43.61% of all expenditures went for instructional support. And again, on that column, it shows what was left per function on the one right before the percentages, and the next biggest amount was for function 81, which was the facilities and facilities acquisition and construction. And that was because we budgeted for projects that did not get done, that were put on hold or tabled. And that's why you see 711,000 left over in that function. On this next slide, it shows other resources. In the 7,000, that includes loan from government capital. The resource we got from that maintenance agreement that we had last year was 984,000. And then also, we received 67,000 for, let's see, for our indirect costs from grants, for our administration of those grants. Then if you go to the next category, it's 8911, which is our flow-through. That is money we budgeted for the district share of the swimming pool costs that we are in agreement with the county and the city. We budgeted 23,500, and it will be expended once we do our end-of-year journals and other processes that we have ongoing throughout the audit. On this next screen is our 240 Child Nutrition Fund Financial. The revenues listed were budgeted at 2.2 million, almost 2.3 million for the year, and those include revenue sources such as our adult sales, our à la carte sales, also state matching funds. But the biggest generated revenue amount came from our USDA breakfast, lunch, and dinner programs. That revenue made up 95.78% of all revenue received. We did budget 2.29 for revenue and only received 1.6, so that left us with a deficiency of $634,000 from revenue that we did not receive as anticipated. And that was due to your five-day and, five-day week, and also with less dinners provided than what was anticipated by the food service department. For expenditures, there's only two functions that the 240 Food Services uses, and it's function 35, which is for food service, and that makes up roughly 98%, 98% of their total budget and expenditures. And the other function is 51, and that makes up 1.59%, and that is for utilities. They pay a portion of, a small portion of the electricity for use of the building for their cafeterias. That's an allowable expense. So at this point, we're anticipating them being short $337,000. Again, there's a lot of end-of-year processes and journals and adjustments that need to take place, so this information is as of currently, but it will, it's an ongoing process as I've described before. Okay, this is for 511 Debt Service Fund. The revenues are mostly generated from our taxes, which brought in 95% of the total revenue. We budgeted a total of 3.2 million, and we received 3.6 million, so we had an excess of $414,000. Our budget was 2.99 million, and we spent almost 100% of that on our debt payments. So we are anticipating an excess of revenue of $677,000 for our debt service fund. And that actually concludes the financials for August. Again, that was just an overview of where we stand at this point. August is a rough month because it seems like it never ends. Only on the calendar does it end. Are there any questions?
Is the end of the year closed out yet, or?
So technically, the end of the year is 8/31. But again, there's a lot of accounts payable processes that take place. We do journals, we do ins and outs, do froms, do twos. That's where your expected money from the state or other sources. So there's a lot of different processes that will be going on probably for the next couple of months, and then our audit will be the end of that. So it can take up to five additional months, six months, of course.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 6E, superintendent report. Dr. Spur.
Good evening again. I just wanted to give just a real quick report. You've heard a lot of information tonight, and I don't want to repeat a lot of that. But first of all, we have had an exciting first six weeks of school. You can see we've got everything from pep rallies and football games and band concerts and opening car doors in the morning to lots of fun, new friends with our, with our early learners. It's been a joy to get to go onto the campuses and see kids in action. Also want to let you know, we've had a lot of professional development going on. We have a lot of support for our teachers who are earning their certification this year. We have about a third of our staff are either DOI or alternative certification, so we really want to support them and help them earn that certificate. As you all know, one of those new laws that came down was teachers must have a certificate in order to serve in core contents, and they're phasing those out starting next year. So folks need to get a certificate. It's not like they could leave us and go to another district that would have a DOI. Those opportunities are going away for general classroom instruction. We'll still have DOI for things like automotive technology and construction trades, things where, you know, the industry experience is something that you can't get through a traditional, you know, academic degree. But for those folks teaching in a, in a general classroom and those core contents, they're going to have to be certified. So we've got mentors who come in and have been working with them. We're also working to get a company called 240 that's going to provide some content support because we know teachers, some of them may have some certificates that they really want to have that secondary science or that secondary math that would earn them an $8,000 stipend. They need that certificate. This is going to be free to any teacher who is looking to earn a certificate. So it will help with the content, and then again, the mentors are supporting them, not only for the tests, but also for success in the classrooms. And they've also met with our paras. We had a paraprofessional development day on the 10th to help support them because we know that they are vital in those classrooms, especially with our, with our younger grades. And then I've had a lot of professional development. Lisa and I attended the School Finance Academy this inaugural year. We'll be going to seven or eight, 10?
10.
10 lessons. And it is like going to graduate for finance and budget. Really important to learn, getting, you know, increasing my knowledge to guide all of the departments and for us to learn some of the new laws that are coming down and better ways to, to share our financial information with the community. Also, I've hit the second of my four first-time superintendent academy sessions, and we had some amazing speakers, and I put the name, pictures of a couple there. Dr. Martha Sartor is superintendent of Tom Ball ISD, and she was one of our state superintendents of the year. And we also got to hear from Dr. Roosevelt Dibbons, who was just named superintendent of the year, and he's awesome. And we got to hear Dr. Dibbons speak at Texas EdCon, was just last week in Houston, and Board President Aguilar is, has been accepted into the Texas Association of School Board's leadership program to become a master trustee, and that's a full-year program. And he had his first sessions there, and Trustee Yainer Hernandez also went. We were able to go spend a couple of days in Houston and learned a lot, a lot of things I'm excited to bring back here, you know, some neat things. We also saw some amazing student performances from Kerrville ISD and St. Angelo ISD, really inspiring, gets you fired up. Just a quick update, you know, every time I get a parent, I'm going to talk a little bit about enrollment and attendance, and you can see that we had a little bit of enrollment increased. We've got the first day of last year, then the first day of this year, and then the end of August and now September 12th. You can see everybody's, is kind of holding where we were a little bit more, maybe. And then you can see where we ended the school year. So it's kind of interesting to see that everybody pretty much at the, at the secondaries, you can see it kind of went down a little bit, but the elementaries, they go up by the end of the year. The reason high schools go down is because they'll have some kids who will graduate in the middle of the year. So that's why at the last day of school, they have less kids because they graduated. So that's not that we, oh, my gosh, what happened to 15 kids? Well, they graduated early. So remember OFDSP, those kids graduate, they officially are withdrawn once they graduate. And then attendance, attendance is a biggie, and look at those numbers, aren't they beautiful? So we, we've been talking about our goal is 96%, and that if we can get to 96% from the 88 that we reported for three years in a row, that's $1 million extra coming to us from the state, and that's a lot of kiddos who are in classes every day getting all of the, the great teaching that's going on. We've had some community engagement events. We did on Monday have a meeting at the high school, and it was talking about online and social media safety and mental health. We were excited to welcome back Luanna Paddock, a proud alum, and her mom is one of our teachers at the community school, and she is a researcher at Texas A&amp;M College Station, and that is, her research is on how social media impacts the mental health of students. They're doing a longitudinal study and looking for family and student partners, especially in the junior high, and there is a, a bit of a financial compensation, and the campuses all have that information. We'll be sharing that out as we, as we meet with parents as well. That was one thing that came out in our first community meeting was parents were very concerned about the impact social media is having, and, you know, in light of all the stuff going on now, you know, our Commissioner of Education sent a letter last week while we were in Houston, reminding folks that we do have an educator code of ethics that holds us to a different standard than our normal first amendment of express rights. I am not Jody. I am Dr. Spur, representing Pierceall ISD in every aspect of my life, so I'm under extra scrutiny, but I signed up for that. So anything we post online is to be up for scrutiny, and so reminding, just because you can't think before you post, for some of us, it's better to just announce some of that in our own health. And.
So that was a great presentation. We also have been talking about the special ed, the permanent review that they did 20, coming into you before we brought on, and I was popping in the team, and they're continuing with that.
I just know what's coming up. September is Awareness Month, and so this is a piece of information that has been put out there that if your kid misses, just, it's not that big a deal to miss one day. Okay, well, one day every two weeks. If you do that every two weeks, that's 20 days a school year. That's four weeks in a year. And if you do that every year, that's a year and a half of school from the time they start in kindergarten until the time they graduate. So.
You know, we want people to stay home when you're ill, when you're not well, but we also want folks to realize that, you know, sometimes I may not feel like that I need to get out of school. It's really important that where the learning takes place. On the financial side, like I mentioned, going from 88% to 96% would be a million extra dollars to the state because we staff for enrollment. If we have 22 kids in every class at CEP, we're going to hire teachers.
Hire teachers for 22 kids in every class. If 10 kids show up, I only get money from the state for 10 kids, but we're going to pay as if we're serving all 22 kids. So that's, that's, you know, we definitely want to make sure we get paid more importantly, because that's how they learn. So the impact on learning is huge. So I appreciate all the work that the campuses are doing to encourage attendance, and we have had a really phenomenal, 90s now, so administrators.
Any questions?
I know I saw all the numbers, so good job, Pierceall Junior High. The numbers look really great, and those are the kids really, honestly, that really never miss. You know, the parents want to send those to school every day. So great job in encouraging them. I really wish that we could make this last slide billboard out on 35 so that every parent as they're driving by could see how important it is to send your kids to school.
We can definitely post it on all of, we need a billboard, we'll take it. I do want to shout.
I do want to, I know I told you already, Dr. Spur, but I do want to tell you and thank you again, and I appreciate you for the share of everything that you have stationed out at high school for the morning and the afternoon. I don't know if any board members have noticed, but it has made a difference. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we've got a contract with Frio County Sheriff's. They will be there an hour and a half before and an hour and a half after. Well, not totally before, not totally after. During that window, when we have drop-off in the morning and when kids leave in the afternoon, they're out there, and I, morning, and they, when we have leaving, they hop out of the vehicle and they're, they're pushing the cars through, so nobody feels like they've got to, you know, I got to, I got to weave through traffic to get out. And same thing in the afternoon, because we know we got a lot of, we got a lot of new drivers, and so we want to make it as safe as possible for everybody, getting, getting everybody in and out on time. So you're very welcome. We're glad to see it's working.
Awesome. Thank you for that update. We'll be moving on to the item 7, Consent Agenda. If you want to look through the board packet, see those items. So we'll be approving those as a one-piece consent agenda. Unless anybody wants to take any of these items out, then we can. Unless anybody wants to take any of these items out, then we can talk about those separately. Does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda?
And of course, D, we just approved.
And then 4H is, we do that every year as well. And then board meeting minutes. If there's no further questions, can I get a motion for this item? I have a motion made by Lionel to approve the consent agenda items A through F as presented. Do I have a second? Okay, was a correction.
July 2nd. I was not present for the July 2nd board. And it says, it shows that I wasn't present, but then it shows I voted in favor of an item.
Which, which item? So we'll make that motion again with the corrections.
Which, which item?
Item
Correct my motion. So make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through E as presented with an amendment on item F for the July 2nd meeting on item 4. To reflect the correction that the head of the board would not present and not vote on that item.
Have a motion made by Lionel Gondola. Do I have a second for that motion? Have a second by Adrian Ramirez, all in favor. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to action items. Item 8A EMS presentation and proposal for inter-local agreement. And we have Commissioner Precinct 2 Mario Martinez to present.
Mr. Board President, the Commissioner is here to discuss and present a proposal for an inter-local agreement regarding emergency ambulance services.
Good afternoon, Board Trustees. Thank you for having me. My name is Mario Martinez. You know, there's an interesting story about my name. Last, about two weeks ago, we opened, we had a grand reopening for the park. And believe it or not, the newspaper got my name wrong. They did a story on it, but they got it wrong. So they put my brother's name, typical sibling, right? He always takes credit for it. But one thing that I will say is that, sorry, I lost track here. In case, so in case some of you do not know me, I am the Frio County Commissioner, Precinct 2. I'm currently the presiding officer of the judge's office. You know, you can call me any name you want. You could even call me by my brother's name. You could even use one of those fancy titles. But one thing I can tell you that you cannot call me is an expert in an emergency ambulance service. And just a quick pop quiz, does any of you know where to submit any complaints when it comes to ambulance services? Anyone? Well, it goes to the Commissioner's court and it goes to the judge's office. And right now, most of them come to me. Majority of them do, and it's not fun. Again, I am not an expert in ambulance services, but, but the Commissioner's court and the judge have the responsibility in providing the best ambulance services in the county. And I'll be honest, sometimes it's difficult making these choices, it's too who to pick. It breaks my heart to think about this every time I think about the services that we currently have. In case y'all don't know, we currently only have three ambulance services in the entire county. There's one station in Moore, one station in Pierceall, and one station in Dilly. And sometimes it's very difficult for them to make location when there's an emergency service, depending on what side of the county it is. And I'll give you an example. About last month, there was an incident here with the Pierce ISD where a student had a seizure. We had one ambulance on a call in Dilly and another one on a call here in Pierceall. And unfortunately, the other one was on a transport in San Antonio. When it's on a transport, it takes about two hours to get back. So when it comes to those situations, it, time is critical. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, we had the response of the deputies or the officers at the moment, and they were able to take him to the hospital. But I want everyone to think about this. It's, it's a pressing, and it's, it's something that, gosh, sometimes I don't sleep at night. Think about that we have three ambulances serving the entire county. It's something we need to work on to improve. And it's, currently, it's the responsibility of the county. But I don't think it should be the responsibility fully of the county. There is four taxing entities in the county. I think we should all contribute a portion of it. And I'm going to share with you, if you mind passing them down. So here you have the EMS contribution by the city of Pierceall and the EMS contribution by the city of Dilly. The last contribution we received was in 2016 to 2017. And it was for $176,000 for the city of Pierceall. And the city of Dilly, the same thing, 2016, 2017, was $58,000. Then 2017, all the way to 2022, there was no contribution. The sole responsibility of the EMS fell on the shoulders of the county. And just like everyone, we all have responsibilities. As you, you here all have the responsibility to educate. Our responsibility is to provide the sheriff's department and provide the service for the county roads and our bridges. And I will tell you this, it will come a point where we can't afford this if we don't get the support from the rest of the entities. This past, this current contract is costing the county $845,000. The next lowest bid was $1.3 million. And we don't go for rebid until 2028. So we have three years left on this contract. And to be quite honest, we have a steal. We got a heck of a deal on this. I don't see us being able to fund this if it continues this way. And again, I'm not here to tell you to, hey, pay half of this, help us with half. I'm here to ask you to help us with something. There was a letter of intent that was, that was considered last year, resolution that was approved, but it wasn't signed. It was, well, thank you, thank you for doing that. But what I would like for us to continue is, is that, and, and again, it's a small portion. It's $25,000 for the next five years. I hope that y'all can continue to make the contribution. But more importantly, I hope that we can work together in uniting all taxing entities to look at this problem. Right now, it's, we're getting by with it, but it currently is a problem. And eventually, with population growth, three ambulances in the county is not enough. We need, we need more for, for our students, we need more for our citizens. And it's tragic to even think of a mass casualty situation. Three ambulance services, what are they going to do? You know, by the time, it's 10 minutes, I think that the, the time of anyone needing that medical assistance, if you don't, if you don't receive it within the first 10 minutes, it causes major casualties. So please consider and work with the, with us, the county, to unite and, and continue to push for the other entities to help finding a solution to this. Currently, we are, the, currently, the ambulance services is stationing at the football games on Friday nights. I hope that they are providing the service that we do hope that they do. And we'll continue to have them provide that service. That's something less that y'all have to go out for bid or contract with another ambulance service. Again, thank you, and I would like to continue this, this cooperation on, from you and every entity in the county. So thank you again. If y'all have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them. The prior years.
I know, I know I spoke to you, Commissioner Martinez, here two, three weeks ago. And, you know, I know last year we agreed with the $25,000. But, you know, as Dr. Spore just mentioned right now, and that's what I was going to say as well, that, you know, when we are requesting services, I mean, we actually have to, you know, levy up the money as well. You know, just like we did, as Ms. Benavita said, you know, having that patrol vehicle there by the county. And, you know, so basically, we're paying, you know, for services regardless. And you did mention about the one, the one student that we had at the high school, which was back in August 14th, and you are correct. I mean, you know, but our, our NSRO was actually the one that took that student. It was in, it was in a county, as you mentioned, but, but anyway.
My only concern on that was
So, I mean, I'm just saying that, I know, I know we talked about this. And, you know, I know you mentioned about the, you gave us a presentation on Dilly, city of Dilly and city of Pierceall, but they contributed in the past. I'm not sure exactly, you know, how that came about, but, and why they dropped. We can't speak for them. But, but I know for one, that Dilly ISD got their services provided without, you know, paying anything towards it, you know? And we paid it, but we didn't get that service. And I understand, like you said, you know, it might be in San Antonio, you know, and, and I can see, you know, your concern. Because I mean, $800,000 is a lot of money, you know, so, you know, and I, I used to be on the emergency services district and asked for the fire department. And just recently, you know, resigned from that position. But, but I know there's been talk, and I believe the, the county judge was, has been talking about, you know, creating an ambulance, you know, ESD for the ambulance services, which that would, I mean, you know, because just recently, you know, the county, the outlined areas of the county has a sales tax, you know, recovery, which when I was on there, and, I mean, they've recovered a little over $100,000 a month, you know, towards it. So, I mean, that would really benefit the ambulance services. I know by me saying this, you know, the fire department will lose some of it, but it's providing emergency services for the county area, you know? And, and those taxes are coming from anybody and everybody that provides within, you know, the supply or products, you know, whether it's online, you know, internet, stuff like that. And, you know, it's something that the county should look and, and making it, you know, decision into it. And I know when we talked, you know, you said, you know,
And we currently are, yes, we currently are looking at that. The downside is that that, you're talking about a two- to five-year plan for that. And again, currently, the need is there. You're right, we weren't able to provide the ser, again, the story that you mentioned, that I mentioned, you're talking about. We weren't able to provide that service, but that's because of the, the downside of where we currently are. We need more funding, we need more help. And I, I don't believe that it's just a county problem. It's, it's a, it's a problem of every entity in the county that should take responsibility in some essence to really think about our emergency services. It's like infrastructure. It's one, one of those things, we don't like to talk about the plumbing, the sewer, but it's the first thing that we definitely do need and the first thing that we complain about when it doesn't work. And again, it's something that I see myself, the need that we need to start making this, start planning for it.
And the one entity that really, you know, I, and again, I'm not going to try to slay anything between what's happening with the county and the hospital district, but that's where a lot of money should be coming from. And they've actually, you know, some boy contracted, you know, or had an agreement. And, you know, whether, you know, y'all haven't gotten reimbursed, you know, I'm not, you know, sure. But that's more of an underlying work field.
Correct, and I agree. If anyone should be taking on the responsibility, it should be the hospital.
Right.
Again, I'm no expert in ambulance services.
Neither are we, you know, so, so, you know, and that's, that's one of the biggest things is that, that, you know, we need, you know, the county needs to look at more the hospital district.
That's right.
And, you know, so basically, that's about it.
This is my first stop. I will, I will be reaching out again to the remainder of the counties. Again, the city of Pierceall has agreed to, I wrote it on there, so it's $20,000 for the next five years. And the city of Dilly will contribute $10,000. And again, that's just a drop in the bucket. It's really not fixing our problem. And it's something that we definitely need to start, continue to work together, again, as, as an entity, all entities of the county. This is something that's not going to go away. Three ambulance services for the counties, I just know it's not enough. No, so the hospital, so the hospital, again, they are experts at this. And so they, they set parameters as to how they wanted the services provided by the ambulance services. According to the hospital, none of them were met. Not, no one reached out to the county in regards in how to correct or make, make any corrections to the ambulance services. So therefore, they did not contribute any money. We, we were, again, and some, and a lot of this right here that you see, this, the city of Pierceall and the city of Dilly were contributing. And at one point, there was a deficit in everyone's budget. So there was a waiver by the county for everyone, and then it just stopped. And again, this is before my time and some of it, obviously, some of you before your time. And again, it's trying to work with every entity. It's a little bit, it's not much that we're asking, and it starts somewhere. And, and again, the city of Pierceall is contributing 20, the city of Dilly is contributing 10,000. It's not much, but it's something.
What would President Man?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I wanted to say that day of the emergency, and there was no availability of EMS. But I did want, I did reach out to Dr. Spore, and our, our team did a great job about covering spots. However, the plan was there, yes, but my big concern and fear was the manpower that's was the manpower that's leaving because we can't have that EMS from the school district, like our security guards and stuff. That was my, my concern, because if our people had to go out and do the escorting and all that, and shifting around, and maybe somebody's losing our manpower of security on the campus. That was my only biggest concern. Dr. Spore had a good plan, they, yes, covered it, they knew the situation wasn't, but however, things can go like that. So I just wanted to say, the EMS, now we're having more and more emergencies and seizures. We just never know. And now with all this, you know, mental health, things can arise. We do need paramedics, we do need paramedics. That's all I say.
And again, I just will emphasize one last thing. The Health and Safety Code, Section 774.003, for the emergency ambulance services provided by counties, it says that the commissioner's court of a county may provide an emergency ambulance service. The county doesn't have to provide ambulance service. And again, I promise you, as far, as long as I remain commissioner, I will never neglect ambulance service for any entity, but I can guarantee you that from anyone else. And it's, it's scary for me to think that, that somebody would be willing to say, hey, you know what, we can't afford this, so we're just gonna stop providing ambulance services. And that's why I want every entity to really recognize this and know that it is a problem. We're getting by, we're just getting by now.
Yeah, I understand y'all's predicament, and, you know, it's just whatever the board decide, you know?
My stance, we're elected here on the school board to make sure that the district, we're doing everything in the best interest of the district and the students and staff. So I'm, I know that we have a budget that was deficit last year of, I think, $2 million, around $2 million. And then this year, we have a balanced budget at the moment, but we also have negatives. We're using, designating fund balance for $4 million for projects that we're trying to improve our school district. $25,000 is not a lot, as you said, but I do see where that $25,000 could be used to fund some of the other initiatives that we're trying to do for the students, whether it be safety upgrades, security upgrades, any type of upgrades for what we're doing. I do wanna help with what you are doing personally. And I do remember someone speaking last time about the emergency service district.
That was me, again.
Yes. So like you said, it'll take, it'll be a while out, but any help that I can do or we can do to advocate for that, for the county in general, please let us know, because I wanna make sure that we do that as well. But on my part personally, I just wanna make sure that we're using the money for the school district and servicing our students. And any money that we do has to be in the best interest of the students, and the students have to get, there's gotta be some type of either benefit or service that's provided to, to the students to use public funds on. It has to be a purpose for it. And when we didn't get the ambulance service for that one student, it's not a fault of any, it's just that's the circumstance that we're right in.
Correct.
Maybe we didn't have someone to transport, or maybe it was even a more dire situation where they needed it. We didn't have that EMS service. And then we do pay for the other ones, like at the football games, those are paid out of our pocket, so. Personally, I wanna make, I wanna help in any way I can. I just don't see the $25,000 from the school on my behalf that we could use it for something that, within the district, that we're needing it, because we don't have a, we actually even pay money back to the state, because they say that we need to pay money back. How much does that pay us?
$30,000.
So we have to pay a hundred, like, just right off the bat, $170,000 out of budget. And then if we use another 25, then that makes $200,000 total on top of some of the other things that we have going on as well. That's just kind of my stance at this particular moment.
And it's understandable, we were in a deficit budget as well, making substantial cuts. And again, this is, this is not my first time being here, this won't be the last one. We will continue to fight to unite all entities throughout the county and making them aware that we currently do have a problem. When all ambulance services stop, what will we do? Where will, who will transport the sick? And then that's when we will all sit down and have this conversation and really put forth the effort. But again, thank you, and we will continue to make this, this fight to have a good... No, thank you, and I appreciate you. It's nine o'clock, I thought our meetings went late, and they don't. So again, thank you, and we'll see you again next year, for sure. Thank you.
So we have, we do have that action item on here. If you look at your document here, there's a suggested motion, has a motion of approval or denial. If anybody, if there's no further questions or discussion. There's no action, then I think they don't need them. I still need a motion, I think, for no... So I don't, I don't need a motion, but if someone makes a motion, I have to acknowledge it and see if I have a second. Is there any motions on this item?
Yes. I move to approve the emergency medical service agreement and contribute $25,000 to Rio County.
I have a motion made by Adrian Ramirez to approve the emergency medical service in our local agreement for Rio County EMS for $25,000. And I have a second by Dora Martha Rodriguez. All in favor? I have Marco Reyes, Dora Martha Rodriguez, and Adrian Ramirez, and Diana Hughes as yes. All against? I have Martina Piz. Andy Aguilar and Lionel Contra against, and motion passed. Thanks, sir. Moving on to item 8B. Consider and approve the proposal to contact, contract with Foundation Innovation LLC to establish a Pierceaw ISD education foundation.
I'd like to introduce to you all Ms. Veronica Goldhorn from the Foundation Innovation LLC, who's going to talk to us about setting up an education foundation for Pierceaw.
Good evening, President Aguilar, Superintendent Dr. Spore, and school board members. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to present to you all this evening about establishing an education foundation here in Pierceaw ISD. So a little bit about myself. I am a consultant for Foundation Innovation, which is the company that you would be contracting with. We stand beside you and take you along the ride on what it takes to establish a foundation here in Pierceaw. We provide systems and processes, tools and resources for you. I am a former educator, retired educator. I served in Church Siblo Universal City ISD for 30 years as a teacher and as a campus administrator and a district-level administrator. And as soon as I retired after 30 years, I joined our education foundation as a volunteer to give back to my district that I was born and raised in. My kids went there, they graduated from there, and that, this district means a lot to me, which I'm sure that you have many community members that are very fond and want to get back to Pierceaw ISD as well. And so an education foundation is one way to do so. So what is an education foundation? We help you stand up a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We help you set up all the important documents that you need to with the IRS, with the Secretary of State, and with the Attorney General to ensure that all of that is taken care of. So we walk you through those processes and file all of that paperwork for you, which we call corporate documents. A foundation is governed by a board of volunteers, just like you are. Y'all are a board of directors. We also form a board of directors within the education foundation. And we have a specific organizational structure, just like you do as a board of trustees, but we're all volunteers, we are not paid, just as you are. You're just donating your time and giving back to your community. What we do as an education foundation is we solicit funds from individual contributions through private foundations and through corporations and through businesses that want to give back to public education, that want to give back specifically to Pierceaw ISD. And we walk you through those processes of how you can go out and solicit those partners in your community. We are also a third party that operates with the school district and the community. So we, again, walk alongside you as an education foundation supporting the goals and your missions that you want to acquire here in Pierceaw ISD for your students and for your teachers and your staff. So the impact of an education foundation falls under these four categories. One being philanthropy. We establish a culture of giving, a culture of generosity, a culture of really relationship-building within your community and providing opportunities to steward those donors that are giving back to Pierceaw ISD. The other area is capacity building. We ensure that, based on the funding initiatives that Pierceaw ISD, you as a board, and the district leadership and the staff in Pierceaw want to do, we provide those opportunities to make those, make that happen by receiving donations from the community in order to fulfill those, almost like a wish list of the things that we know that the school budget can't do because they are focused on specific things and you can only spend your dollars on specific items in a lawful way. We are able to come in and provide creative ways and innovative ways, which is the next area, is providing innovative ways to whatever the education foundation decides that they want to prioritize those fundings for. Those are some innovative ways that we can provide in the district. And I know that Dr. Spore was talking about teacher certification. I'm not sure if y'all already have a way to go about paying for that, but the education foundation could seek donations for teachers that you want to have stay in Pierceaw, that we could provide that cost-effective benefit to them by providing pay for those certifications, because you want to keep and retain those great teachers that you already have here. You don't want to lose them. And then last of all, it's a partnership. It's a partnership between you all as a school board trustee, the community, and the education foundation. And we're just, again, running alongside you guys in alignment with the goals and initiatives that you set forth, and we're able to make those things happen for you all. Key components for success, there are five areas. One is infrastructure, that we focus on in the very beginning of establishing your board. The organizational structure is you have a president, you have four VPs in specific areas, you have a secretary, and then you have your volunteers who are running alongside those VPs and helping within the specific areas of that organizational structure, such as finance and governments and governance. There's development, which is fundraising. There is programs where you oversee those areas. And then the last one is the fun one, is marketing and events. We make sure that we help you with that development of your board of volunteers and helping you recruit, seeking out specific skill sets that are gonna be needed for this board to make it successful. And we, the fun part also is the imaging. We help develop a logo with you, we develop a brochure in order to make sure that we can market that information and brand this education foundation. We establish programs. Typical foundations do grants, do scholarships, those are awesome, but we're wanting to think outside the box. In addition to, how can we provide academic recognition to your students? Are there ways that we can do that? Are there ways that we can go big with employee recognition? I'll give you one example that we started in SEUC, is we did an unsung hero event where we acknowledged all our custodians, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, our paraprofessional staff, where they came. We had about 350 where we fed them, we did a carnival theme, they played games, we did door prizes throughout that hour and a half, and just really showed that we valued them, because they are your behind-the-scenes people, and they need recognition too. So our foundation was able to do that. That is something that could be, something that Pierceaw does, in addition to recognizing your teachers and your students. We do development, which is the hard part, but it's also the fun part. It's the fundraising and bringing in those dollars. You will not believe how many people want to give back to your community. All you have to do is ask, but you have to have those means to ask, right? What research tells us is the education is the second highest of an area where people want to give back. The first one is your church, and we can't compete with God. We can't compete with Jesus, right? So, but education is number two, and that is important to know, that people want to help. And especially the situation with public education right now, with all of these House bills that, in the legislation that has passed that are unfunded, the education foundation can find your donors to come and give back and do those great things that you want to do. You just don't have the means to do so because of you're tied to your budget and what you must spend it on. So here's our experience that we have with Foundation Innovation. We solely work with education foundations in school districts, over 475 in the state of Texas and across the country. We offer a wide range of services. Not only would we be establishing new foundations, like what they did with us in Church Siblo Universal City, they revitalized ours after COVID in 2020. We just petered out. People were tired, it was a scary time, and there was not a lot of in-person activity going on. So it just died out. But through our revitalization and working with Foundation Innovation, we were able to come back, and we're doing, we're even stronger than ever before. Our community is recognizing us, we're invited to things and sharing information about what we're doing for the district, and people want to give. And we've had a lot of returning donors even giving more because they've seen how we are using their dollars to the benefit of teachers, staff, and students. There are other standalone professional development that we can provide, strategic planning. There is, bookkeeping services is key. We want to make sure that you're spending your money wisely and doing it and tracking it wisely. So that is key. We provide compliance reviews, fundraising and development training, but we are all professionals, we are hands-on, and we are a leading expert in the field of establishing education foundations. And we provided in your packet a client list of all of the, and based on district sizes of what we've worked with in the past. So you're welcome to call any one of those school districts and reach out and ask how Foundation Innovation did in supporting with your endeavors. But the specific quantitative measure is going to be, how much money can we help you bring into your district? And so Foundation Innovation has brought in, with all of our clients, 35 million in funds to school districts. And our results are, in year one, you are guaranteed to raise up to 50,000 to 100,000 in one year, and in the second year, up to 150,000. Our proposal contains an agreement of 12 months. It's over a year that we're able to give you all of these tools, processes, and systems. It's 12 months, 10 onsite visits, and then we're always available to meet with you on a phone call, a video conference, texting. We are available to you in the entire time of your contract with whatever that you need. We, again, help you provide those corporate documents and make sure that you are set up for success. We provide that board development training that I was just sharing with you, all of the imaging and developing and branding. We also provide two specific things, is a document storage. When we provide you with agendas and tools and resources, templates, all of those things, it's available online, and we provide a board manual with all of that. I'm very much a copy person, I need the paper. I need to highlight it and mark it and post-it note it. So you get both. You have the online and you have the board manuals that would be given to you. The contract is for 27,000, over 13 installments. The great news is, is that we partner with a private foundation, and they guarantee a $15,000 grant to your education foundation to help you offset the cost, because that's how much they believe in public education, and that's how much they believe in education foundations supporting your school district. So that is something that would help offset the cost. So when you look at what that price tag would be, it's about $1,000 a month. But when you look at the return on investment, if you can bring in, let's say, the 100,000 in one year, you're well than paying it off, right? So here's some recent clients, just recently... So here's some recent clients, just recently, like in the last two or three years. As I said, the client list is over the years. But I can share with you, the largest one on the recent list is Pasadena. They have about 50,000 students that we work with in establishing their foundation. And the smallest one that I had the pleasure of working with is Dinebox ISD. It's right outside of College Station. They have about 180 kids, and they raised $100,000 in their first year. So it is possible. When you're not only looking at your community of what they can give, but there are alumni in Pierceall that I'm sure that are very famous, that have built businesses. And I think of one that I know of. I think his name is George Strait. But we can tap into, could that be a resource that he would want to give back? Or other alumnis that have been successful, that want to give back to their district that they grew up and want to see great things happen for your community. So that's all I have to share with you this evening. The information that was provided for you in that packet is the detailed information that was presented to you in this presentation. You have our list of clients there for you and just other important information about Foundation Innovation. So I'm happy to address any questions that you may have.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So here locally, we do have a private education foundation.
Yes.
Has been ongoing, I would say, at least 10, 15 years.
Oh, that's amazing.
And so how do we consider such a partnership? How do y'all work with them? Or y'all stand alone?
We are standalone, but we would be more than willing to partner with them and learn from them. They can learn from us. They can attend the board meetings as well that we established over that 12 months. But we would not want to be in competition with them at all. We would want to bring them in and help support their endeavors as well.
That would be my only...
Yeah.
Definitely a consideration is the fact that we already have our educational foundation.
Yeah. We had a situation, I'm working with Cattula currently right now. Cattula just established their education foundation. We started with them in February, and they had a similar situation. It wasn't, not an education, a foundation, but they had a scholarship program that they created for a former student that had passed away. And so they do an annual event and raise funds for scholarships for the kids in Cattula. So we are not even touching the scholarship situation because that's their baby. So let's look at other ways that Cattula Education Foundation would be able to support the community right now. So that's how we're taking care of that situation in Cattula, but we would also work with the current foundation and making sure that we are working together, not against one another. Any other questions?
I do want to elaborate on, you mentioned about the cost and you could get a grant. Is that something that we would have to apply for?
We would apply for you. We would apply for you. It's a Texas Pioneer Foundation, and they, as I said, they are very passionate about public ed. They put on a free conference every year and invite all education foundations across the state of Texas to come for free. Of course, you would pay for your travel to get there. It's been held in San Marcos over, I don't know, 15-plus years. Just recently, in the last two years, they moved it over to Lost Pines or Resort, which is outside of Bassdrop. It's considered Cedar Creek near Austin. But they put on that conference. Every client that we've signed on has received the $15,000 grant, and we fill that out for you as part of the contract. You just got to sign your name.
Is there any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
So if there's no further questions or discussions on this item, can I get a motion on this item?
I've contacted them after talking with a couple of the board members and talking in the community. You know, we don't have an education foundation that serves the whole district. We do have the, there's a scholarship fund that has education foundations attached to it, but it's not an education foundation supporting the whole district that would be able to do things like we're talking about, you know, providing some support for the whole district, some of the big initiatives that we want to do. And this would be a way for, you know, anybody who wants to make a donation to the school district, they can donate through the education foundation, a 501(c)(3), and then that money is there. It's safe. One of the concerns that the auditors had discussed with Lisa, and she discussed with me, was when we had staff donate for a scholarship and we're given a T-shirt, all that money is kept on our books. We're not a 501(c)(3). And so to keep that kind of money in our books is something the auditors don't like. They would prefer for us not to. And then also, there was no huge, there was not a structure around the giving, the receiving of money and the giving back of the money to the students. So this way, the nonprofit takes care of all that. It doesn't get muddied up with any of our money. So that's where that's coming from, when we had community wanting to give, and this would be the mechanism to be able to give in a very clean way.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any further discussion or questions? And if not, can I get a motion on this item? I have a motion made by Marco Reyes. Do you have a second? Second by Diana Hughes. All in favor? We have in favor Marty Benavides, Marco Reyes, Matthew Aguilar, Lionel Candela, Laura Monta Rodriguez, and Diana Hughes. All against? One, Adrian Ramirez? Oh, Ramirez. I need to look at my paper. So motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Noticeable.
We'll move to item 8c, consider and appoint a member of the Pierceall ISD Board of Trustees to serve on the Frio County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Mr. President, we have a representative from our school district board of trustees serves on the Frio County Appraisal District Board of Directors. We have an unfinished term being vacated by Board Trustee Adrian Ramirez, and we need to appoint a different member of the board to serve on that county appraisal district board of directors.
And then I just want to say, just to make sure that, just in case anybody from the appraisal district is watching by any means, but I did get the notice on these, I think something. Letting me know that we had John Williams, we're not wanting to do that anymore. And I did call him and everything, but we just didn't all do anything else, and now we're doing that currently. And if Michael wants to step up for it, does anybody else want to? I mean, no rush. If no one else wants to do it, then we have someone who would like to do that. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Marco Reyes for the Frio County Appraisal District Board of Director.
I have a motion made by Lionel Candela. I have a second by Marty Benavides. All in favor? Unanimous. Motion passes. Moving on to item 8d, consider and approve the selection of MTR Engineering, Civil Engineering, to provide civil engineering services.
Mr. Word President, as y'all know, we've brought you a couple of reports from MTR engineers regarding the situation at the track. And in order to move forward, I'm requesting permission to negotiate a fee with them to move forward with Proposal 1, and also for them to look at the traffic situation at the high school. And any of that would be, you're just giving me permission to approach them and to negotiate a contract. And again, anything that goes over 25 would need to come back to you guys, but this is just to give me the board's permission to negotiate the fee and to contract with them.
All right. Any questions? And if not, can I get a motion on this item? I have a motion made by Marco Reyes. Do you have a second? Second by Laura Monta Rodriguez. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 8e, consider and approve the defecence plan resolution.
Fernandez is going to come talk to us about this proposal that has to do with defecence and our tax rate.
This is a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to approve the defecence plan resolution. The district has an opportunity to pay off debt early by adopting a no-rate increase to the interest and sinking tax rate. Because property values increase, if we keep the tax rate the same, the district will generate excess funds in the interest and sinking fund. A defecence plan allows the district to pay off debt with that excess of funds, and this was discussed in the public hearing and meeting that we held on August 27. This could save the district and taxpayers approximately $150,000. Tonight, we have Mr. Thomas Lastreps with Teherina Financial Consultant. He is here to present more information on this matter.
I'll just use that. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for having me out. Thomas Lastreps with Teherina Financial Consulting. We're the district's financial advisor on all things bonds, which everyone loves to talk about, especially at 9:15 at night. But that was a very succinct and excellent intro to the discussion we're going to have tonight. I'll keep it pretty brief for you, and please stop me with any questions, if you'll have any, as I go through the presentation here. Just to briefly cover a cash defecence, I'm going to use redemption here as well because it's essentially the same thing, but a cash defecence is a financing tool that the district has available to it to use excess INS fund collections, or excuse me, excess INS tax revenue collections or fund balance to pay off outstanding bonds early. And so, as is mentioned, the district's value grew about 7.5% this year. And so by adopting the same tax rate, you would be bringing in more revenue due to the increase in value. And so the school board has the authority to set the tax rate at any level of desires, but by setting it at the same rate as it was last year, you would be bringing in excess revenue, which you could use to pay off some of your outstanding debt. The benefits of that, of course, being paying off bonds early, reducing your total payment, what we're going to discuss later tonight, you're actually going to knock two full years off of your maturity. Your maturity is on your bond schedule there. The defees bonds are no longer treated as debt payable by the district. They will no longer be reported in the audit as part of the district's outstanding debt. And once the bonds have closed, you know, if there was an escrow agent involved, they would assume the payments of the principal and interest, or if a bond is currently eligible for a bond call, you can pay off the bondholders directly without the need for an escrow agent. So one item of note, defecences have been targeted in legislation in the past. They were targeted again this year. There have been efforts to remove the tool from school districts to manage their INS fund tax rate and to set it every year only at the level that will be required to make the annual bond payment that year. And so we're working with a lot of districts that are choosing to use this defecence tool now before it's taken away for a variety of reasons, you know, some of it being bond savings, some of it being maintaining that INS tax rate in anticipation of a future bond election. But there's a variety of positive reasons to take advantage of this tool while you still can. Of course, you know this, but your tax rate last fiscal year was about 15.5 cents per $100 of valuation without a cash defecence. So if you were going to set your INS tax rate at just the level required to make your bond payment in fiscal year '26, you would be looking at a decrease of about 5.5 cents or a total new INS tax rate of about 9.9 cents. This is a look at the three series of bonds y'all have outstanding. You've got a school building bond, Series 20, 2020, and then two refunding bonds, one from 2017 and one from 2015. Highlighted in Pierceall Green there at the bottom is the one we're looking at redeeming with the excess collections. It's the Series 2015. The call date column lets you know when the district is eligible to refund or defees those bonds without putting money into an escrow account. And so the 2015 bonds became callable in August of this year. And so we can actually take the money that we bring in from the excess collections and just pay off the bondholder directly without involving an escrow agent, without making investments, without involving several other working group members that would charge y'all a fee. And so the bottom there, the stacked bar chart represents visually, I guess, the three series of bonds by, you know, kind of annual payment. So you can see the majority of the payments over the next five years are made up by the Series 2020, that school building bond. But the longest dated payments you have are that blue bar at the bottom is the Series 2015. And so what we're looking at doing is actually paying off the 2032, the 2031, the 2030, and a portion of the 2029 maturity on the 2015 bond. So you would lose the 2032 and 2031 maturity on your outstanding debt with a new final debt payment for the district of 2030. And so you'd be knocking two full years off of your bond repayment schedule. Hopefully, this is a little easier for y'all to read on your handout here, but this is just an Excel printout of kind of our tax rate impact model that we put together. The really, the key points being your new value in this tax year. Fiscal year '26 is about $2.08 billion. You can see that increase there, about 7.6%. We're projecting some state aid, and that's the additional state aid for the home state exemption that you receive from the state. The column there, that the plus cash redemption contribution, represents an estimate of what the district's excess tax collections would be and what they would need to contribute in order to maintain the INS tax rate at about 15.5 cents. And then that column highlighted in green represents the amount of principal and interest that you would be paying off. So for a contribution of about $1.14 million, you'd be paying off about $1.35 million there in principal and interest. So we call that the future value savings is about $216,000, the difference between the amount of principal and interest paid off versus the cost to the district and the cash contribution there. And the net present value savings on that is about $150,000 or 13.6%. And again, that far right column after the green, the net debt service, you can see there that by taking advantage of the cash redemption and defecence, you will be reducing your total payment from 2032 final maturity to 2030 final maturity. So knocking two years off, but you're in a position to pay off all of your bonds in the next five years. Any questions? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this item? And if not, can I get a motion on this item?
This has to be approved before.
So can you just clarify that you mentioned that, you know, the funds we're able to log with the same tax rate?
Correct, yes. And I should have added that what y'all will be adopting tonight is the defeasance resolution, which is a document your bond council put together for you, which is essentially committing the district to using the excess INS revenue they bring in to pay off bonds early and not putting it away in the debt service fund account. It's essentially stating that the district, by adopting a higher-than-required tax rate, you will be using the funds to pay off debt early. And what we had bond council do was write in flexibility in the amount that we're planning to defeat. So if you end up bringing in a little bit more money, we can defeat more. If collections come in a little bit less, we can defeat less. So you're not obligated to exactly what we looked at tonight. It'll be dependent on what your tax collections are in the spring. And at that time, we can quickly close after y'all have a good idea of the amount you want to contribute, because again, we'll just pay off those bondholders directly. We won't have to go out for an escrow bid or anything like that.
Yes, thank you.
Make a motion to accept the future plan resolution presented by Teherina Financial Consulting.
Made by Lando Granada. Do I have a second? Have a second by Doramont Rodriguez. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to Item 8F, consider and approve the 2025 tax rate as presented at the public meeting held on August 27, 2025.
Yes. And just to reiterate, the tax rates that were proposed are the same as last year's.
Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the 2025 tax rate.
Have a motion made by Mari Benitez. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Lando Granada. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to Item 8G, consider and approve a purchase order over $25,000 to Patient Service Center Region 20 in the amount of $148,509.97 for commitments for the 2526.
Good evening, once again, Mr. Board President, members of the Board, and Dr. Spore, community members. Here, again, we are going to be looking at ESC Region 20 commitments here for the district. We enter into annual commitments with Region 20 for services that are needed in order to successfully operate, and they span various functions across the district. So this year, again, our commitments come in at right under $150,000. Do want to note that this is in line with the previous two years of commitments with Region 20, so that is very consistent with what we've done the last couple of years. So if you do have any questions, you do have the commitments in your board book. I'd love to answer any questions if you have any questions.
What is Daniel? On the commitments, you may not use Region 20, or we use a different program?
Mr. President, Mr. President, regardless of the TDR, so we get taken about six to sort of five positions.
I just want to make sure that we're looking at how.
No, no, we don't do the cyber security part because we just partnered with DT Austin to provide the regional, I guess, security services with monitoring and stuff like that. And that's for free.
Is there anything significant that changed from last year?
Mr. Yeah. Mr. President, in all honesty, what we did do was we discovered that we were utilizing and needed to continue to utilize a lot of the things that we have the last couple of years. There was a couple of things that we really determined after analyzing the function and the usage that we did not want to continue using. But again, it was very much consistent with what we've had. There was only a couple of things that we decided not to renew. And it was based on usage and how we've been operating the district. We really determined that it wasn't something that we needed to continue going forward.
A sender's a big part of that cause.
Anyone have any questions? Can I get a motion on this item?
I move to approve the purchase order for over $25,000 to Safety Vision for operation in the amount of $74,997.53 for a new camera system for school buses.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Spore, members of the Board, Dino Gadaso with the Technology Department. I came to y'all before about wanting to get some bus cameras upgraded. Unfortunately, it didn't work out with funding, the federal fund, how we thought we'd be able to get that grant, because it's something that we already had, so it's something that that grant wouldn't pay for. So we are in need of replacing and upgrading our camera systems to buses. Many of them are antiquated and no longer kind of, either they didn't record or there's some type of faulty hardware with it. And then also, it takes resource, right? A technician has to go and pull that video from the bus. The solution we're kind of going to is, it's called Safety Vision. I believe, the target lot, you're familiar with it, down in Dilly, Cottol ISB, some other districts around the area use it. It's been, it's pretty reliable. The company's been around for 30 years, and so, they're based out of Houston, Texas, so we're not too far away if we need some support. That cost right there is, for five years, the renewal, I think, was about $1,000 or something that a year after that for the, more so for the data plan in the camera system. It has passive GPS, so wherever that video's kind of taking place, it's kind of tracking that GPS marker, right, of where that video, an incident happened or whatever, it'll give you the GPS coordinate. It's not live. We didn't pick the live data part of it because, let's be honest, that's another service once the bus leaves. Clear sorrow goes out there in the community, in the rural area. Our cell phones don't work very good, so it doesn't really make sense to try to stream video while the bus is out there. But when it does come back to the bus garage, that video will offload, you know? So the principals, the good thing for them is they can request the video, so they'll go in and they can actually pull the video. Now, of course, if the bus is turned off, the system's off, right? But once that bus is fired back on, then that video is uploaded. One of the good things, too, that little square button right there on the bottom right-hand, right? It's kind of the, kind of fun with a bus driver saying there's a vaping incident, a fight, or something on the bus, but the bus driver presses that button, and it'll mark the video, right? How many times before have we gone? Hey, I need, you know, make my take, Daniel, I need four hours of video. So there we are, trying to, you know, scroll through the video and try to, you know, once that bus driver presses that, hey, it was about 9:30, or that event is triggered into software. So that's a good thing about having that. Also, that little indicator, you know, the bus driver gets in the bus. Right now, they don't know if the camera's working or not, right? They just go and then come back and, hey, we need the video. We missed it. It didn't record what happened. That little indicator now has a little, you know, says video loss, you know, kind of indicates if there's a hard drive issue, things like that. So the bus driver can kind of physically see, hey, there's something wrong with the recording system or whatever. Also, this system sends out alerts via email, so it'll let us know kind of beforehand, hey, you're having issues with video loss on Route 5, camera number three. And so, that will kind of, I kind of like that feature, right? Because we're not just waiting for it to break, so we'll be proactive. And so, the total cost for the software, the hardware, is $74,997.53. This is going to be for 12 buses, including the vans and one of the SUVs.
12 buses or 12 whole cameras?
12 buses, yeah. With about five cameras, you know, four to five cameras, like, you got some buses that are a little bit shorter, so it might just use four cameras.
They all have the back camera show.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We didn't do the stop arm, because it's not really kind of enforcing the state of Texas right now. The salesman was honest, like, I wouldn't spin the stop arm right now unless you're, you know, the city's going to enforce it or kind of, so we didn't get that.
And then, so it's 12 buses and then also the, like, the other vehicles that we have?
Yes, sir. Good night.
One of the other features that we thought was actually very, very, very nice was they do have the opportunity for us to be able to blur out students that should we need to be able to have something and we need to be able to only, you know.
For purposes, right? Like, if you got to show a video to a parent, where you can't see all the other kids at the back jumping onto us, right? You got to try to blur them out to protect that record. So that's one of the neat features that software has.
I actually think that's a really good price for 12 buses and all the other vehicles. Like, a really good price.
Well, in all honesty, Daniel and I really tried to work with the representative. They initially wanted to be able to give us only three years of warranty, and we really pushed for the five years because another company was also, you know, going to be able to offer the five years. And they were able to work with us, so they did show some flexibility with that. So we appreciate that.
They're going to install it all?
Yes, sir. No, sir, just for the cellular data, like for the GPS back end, and that'll be about 17 and.
These haven't been replaced.
No, sir.
It's been a while.
Is that, is it 12, all our buses?
Yes, sir. We got a total of 19 buses, but 12 are working good buses used for routes. The rest are antiquated.
These haven't been replaced.
No, sir.
It's been a while.
Is that, is it 12, all our buses?
Yes, sir. We got a total of 19 buses, but 12 are working good buses used for routes. The rest are antiquated. Yes, thanks, for the vans and the spare buses.
That's the only thing that was going to be added.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
For the question, the questioning, can I get a motion on this item?
I move to approve the purchase order for over $25,000 to Safety Vision in the amount of $74,997.
All right. All right. The Board will adjourn to closed session in accordance with the Textual Open Meeting Act of Government Code 551.074 to consider the following, Government Code 551.076 to consider the deployment or specific occasions for implementation or of security personnel or devices review the emergency operation plan and pursuant to Government Code 551.074, discuss of Board self-assessment, evaluation roles and duties of Board members and deliberation regarding matters related to employment, appointments, resignations, terminations, retirement, and reassignments. The time is now 9:33 PM, and the Board will now convene into effective. The time is now nine thirty-three PM, and the board will now convene into executive.
And the Piers R S D school board will come back out of pro session to public session. Do we have any business to take care of? No business? Okay. If no one else has anything else to take care of? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion and a second by Mahdi, all the favor. Meeting adjourned at ten forty four P M.